Contingent upon approval of rezoning this parcel to an R2 district. So, the operation of short-term rental requires interim use in an R2 district per Section 515-56 of the Code of Ordinances. Some of the things provided in here were a floor plan as well as a site plan on here. I'll kind of highlight the units that are currently existing in there. Unit one has a one-bedroom. Unit two is a studio. Unit three is also a studio. This is the rental that the applicant is currently proposing to use. And then, unit four is a two-bedroom. A couple of things on here related to the operation of it. A plan for garbage disposal by the permit holder. He did state that it would be up to the tenant to put that out the night before and then bring that back the day of. The applicant also indicates that there will be a no-pet policy on this property. As part of this, as part of short-term rental, the fire marshal as well as the building inspector will have to inspect this. It is something that is done yearly. If the applicant did want to change to a different unit in here, he would bring that before staff and the fire marshal and building inspector would have to inspect if you were to propose a new one. Also, some of the property rules. There are no exterior features to the property, so there's no proposed outdoor usage. He also has proposed that there's two parking spaces available, so they wouldn't be required to park off-street. The occupancy per each of the units, as part of the International Property Maintenance Code, would be a maximum of two persons essentially for every unit. So, a max of two persons for each one of the four units. Each of the units do have a full bathroom as well as a full kitchen. And there's a couple of things at the end that will be requirements as part of the new zoning code, so the applicant does understand that he does have to be granted state and local sales tax numbers, including hotel and motel use sales taxes. He will have to show proof of this prior to occupancy, as well as he will have to contact the Minnesota Department of Health. He will also have to show proof that he has contacted or has received a license from the Minnesota Department of Health. So, as of writing this, one party has contacted the community development department with concerns about the interim use permit here. That was specifically, I guess, geared towards potential noise or potential parties of an Airbnb. Staff's opinion of this, staff recommends approval of this interim use permit for one short-term rental unit. Conditional on reinspection by the building inspector and fire marshal, and the interim use permit complies with all provisions of the adopted zoning code. Additionally, staff recommends that the applicant be allowed to change which unit in the building is used as a short-term rental upon notification of staff and reinspection by the building inspector and fire marshal. Only one unit may be advertised as a short-term rental at any given time. And that is all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. And again, to be clear, this staff recommendation is contingent upon the approval of the rezoning request.
That is correct.
So, these kind of need to migrate together, or the interim use permit is not valid under the current ordinance. To be clear. Other questions for staff on this application? Yes, Mr. Erickson, please.
At least one question. James, you mentioned the complaint or the concern was about noise, and that's, I think, a valid concern, especially with Airbnb nested within with other units. In their application, they do say that regulations and rules, noise limits are enforced between those hours. Did they give any indication of how that would be enforced, or is it just kind of in the...
It would be essentially through city code, and it'd probably be a complaint to either, you know, we do have contact information for the property manager, as well as possibly a complaint to the police department.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair...
Mr. Chair, may I also, to Commissioner Erickson's question as well. Per the city code also, because all short-term rentals have to be a licensed rental, it also is, the conduct on-premise section of Section 425 of the rental code does apply here as well. So, if there's any disturbances or anything that would violate the conduct on-premise, the property owner would be held responsible for that as well.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Erickson, do you have a follow-up?
Not a follow-up, no.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to public hearing then. We open the public hearing for the interim use permit at 6:18. Anyone that wishes to speak on this topic, if you would approach the podium, state your name and your address, and address your comments to the chair. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak on this interim use permit? Ms. Best Gill, I'm going to ask if you can give signal if there's anybody online. And again, is there anyone here tonight that would wish to speak on behalf of this, or speak on this interim use permit?
Mr. Chair, quickly, also, just as a reminder, for anyone online, if you are online or called in and would like to speak, you have star sixes to unmute yourself.
Thank you. And star three to raise your hand, so that we can recognize you. And one last call. Is there anyone who would wish to speak on this interim use permit application before the commission this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and move discussion back to the commission. Is there any discussion at the commission on this interim use permit? Hearing none, I'd be looking for a motion that recognizes that this interim use permit approval would be contingent on the rezoning. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Mr. Erickson, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Here? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion carries. And, Mr. Kramvik or Mr. Chansky, could you please advise the applicant on next steps?
Yep. As for next steps, because this interim use permit is conditional on the adoption of the approval of the rezoning, it will not go to council until May 16th, which is the date that they would vote to approve the rezoning.
All right. Thank you. We're now at Item 63, which is a conditional use permit for an auto body shop on 124 Eighth Avenue Northeast. And, Mr. Kramvik, would you be setting this up for us as well?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jesse Hopkins has submitted a request on behalf of Shannon's Auto Body at 124 Eighth Avenue Northeast, PID number 41190512, for a conditional use permit to operate an auto body shop in the B4 General Business District. This property is located in the B4 district. Operation of the auto body shop does require conditional use per Section 515-63-6 of the zoning code, provided that it meets the following criteria. First criteria is the entire area other than occupied by buildings or structures or planting shall be surfaced with bituminous or concrete, which will control dust and drainage. The entire area shall have a perimeter curve barrier, a stormwater drainage system, and is subject to the approval of the city engineer. So, the entire parking surface is an improved surface. The parking area does not have a perimeter curve barrier, but it will be still subject to the review of the city. Engineer is part of the building permit process. The applicant has not proposed any changes to the existing parking lot. The next couple of conditions in there are related to emissions and pollution control by the MPCA. Those are conditions that will be reviewed by the engineer as well as a building official upon application of the building permit. Another condition is that all flammable materials, including liquids, rags, shall conform with the applicable provisions of the Minnesota Uniform Fire Code. The fire marshal will review the storage of flammable liquids and rags and ensure that it meets provisions of the fire code. All outside storage shall be prohibited except for customer automobiles and trucks waiting repair. So, the applicant has proposed, as part of the site plan, to screen any inoperable vehicles that are awaiting repair behind a chain-link fence that would have privacy slats. The screened areas are depicted on the attached site plan. So, as of writing, no one has contacted the community development department with concerns about the conditional use permit for the application of the proposed auto body shop. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit for operation of the auto body shop at 124 Eighth Avenue Northeast.
All right, thank you. Are there questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing at 6:23. I've got to tell time a little bit better. 6:23, thank you. Is there anyone that wished to speak on the proposed conditional use permit before us this evening? And anyone wish to speak on the topic of the conditional use permit before us this evening? I think I would like to maybe ask the applicant to come on up, and if you could, maybe run us through your proposal, if you would, and maybe some of the highlights or things that you would like to bring to our attention as we think about this.
Sure, sure. So, Jesse Hopkins, 14998 Riverside Drive. This existing building was built, I want to say 70s. It was a pomida originally, and most recently, it was used as an office building by a census. They have vacated this space about a year ago, so it sat empty, and fairly recently, Shannon purchased it to expand his business. Shannon's Auto Body is a reputable business in our area. He's operated for many years. And to be able to come into the city of Brainerd, I think he's outside of, it's Highway 18, I think. So, to be able to bring that business into the city of Brainerd, better location, better access, better visibility, that was a nice opportunity for him. As James mentioned, you know, this is a previously developed, so there's an existing building there, and all of the hardscape is, as you can see on the site plan, it, you know, is pretty extensive. It covers most of the lot. Our plan is to remodel the inside of the building into a cutting-edge auto body shop. It's going to be light, it's going to be professional-looking. We are going to upgrade the exterior. All four sides of the building will be repainted, and the, so we really are looking for a clean, professional appearance for the business, maybe different than what we think of as traditional auto body shop. But there will be two fenced areas on-site. One of them, out in front, would contain rental cars and cars that have been fixed. That's going to be fenced for security. It's not going to be screened. That won't look any different than a typical parking lot in the city limits. There's a lot that is on the north side of the building, the smaller lot, that is where the incoming cars, the cars that have body damage, will be stored before they're brought into the facility. It will be fenced, and it will be screened. There is a new trash enclosure screening planned for the, be the east end of the building. So, we are going to be doing a little bit of paving back there and enclosing that area for trash and recycling. Any particular questions that the planning commission might have about the project?
Well, thank you. Mr. Hopkins, any questions for the applicant on the proposal?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have one quick question. The parking lot lighting, are you intending to keep the lighting that is currently working in the parking lot? And just, because I was by there the other day, and some of it's going, some of it's not going, but I'm assuming that's because it's turned off.
Yeah, yeah.
So, can you just give me an idea of what you're planning on doing with the luminaries, both on the building and the parking lot?
Sure. We are not planning on changing any of the lighting on-site or on the building. If any of the fixtures need to be relamped, we would do that, but no plans to upgrade them otherwise.
Do you have other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would care to speak to the commission on the conditional use before us this evening? This will be the last call on that. All right, hearing none, we're going to close the public hearing at 6:27, and let's move to discussion at the council. Is there any discussion from the members of the commission? Yes, Mr. Jager, please.
Yes, I have a question that could be directed to staff if this is time appropriate. It's my understanding that in our current code, as well as our proposed code, parking lots that have greater than 10 stalls would require screening, and I believe I heard the applicant say that the lot to the south would not have screening. And I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. Mr. Chansky, sorry.
Steph, can you go to the site map for me? So, I believe Mr. Hopkins was referring to that site south, that site would actually, that would be like the northeast corner. That's the one, I believe, Jesse, you said that one will not, it'll be fenced but not screened, because that's what the completed vehicles will be.
Because it's not abutting a residential, it's not required on the southern lot, correct?
Yeah. And then, the southern section, I believe, that's where the vehicles awaiting repair will be?
Yeah, possibly. I misspoke. It is the north, the north edge that would be fenced and screened, and where the damaged vehicles awaiting repair would be placed, you know, planned north on our site map.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's what had me backwards.
Okay, okay. Did I say that the other way around?
No, I think you said it right, but I think I was...
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
And then, again, to answer Commissioner Jager's, because it's not, you know, it's not adjacent to anything residential, everything around it is either commercial industrial.
Yep.
There's no screening requirement.
Understood, yeah. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion from the commission? Hearing none, be looking for a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Ms. Wilbert, is there a second on the motion?
A second, yeah.
All right, Mr. Gorham, is there any discussion on the motion?
Ms. Chair.
Yes, please.
I would just like to add that I'd like to thank the applicant for wanting to build in the city of Brainerd. Shannon's Auto Body has a longstanding reputation of exemplary business conduct. I've been to your business before, they always look spectacular, they're well-kept, and I'm super excited to have this in the city. So, thank you so much.
All right, then, we've got a motion, we have a second. Let's move to vote. Is there, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Kramvik, can you please advise the applicant on next steps?
It'll go before the city council for their consideration during the regular meeting on May 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky.
Yep.
All right. We are now at Item 6D on the agenda, variance for lot splits, property ID 41290732. So, Mr. Kramvik, could you please set that up for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jacob Lauter has submitted a request for two variances for proposed lot split at PID 41290732 along Wise Road, Brainerd, Minnesota 56401. This property is currently zoned as a rural residential district. The applicant was waiting for the new proposed zoning code and zoning map for this lot split request. At that time, it was only going to require one variance. It will require two variances now at this time. The purpose of the RL2 district, which is the proposed future district for this parcel, is for land served by private well and septic, and there are no plans for future expansion of urban services to this property. So, this property is located on the north side of Wise Road, which does not have access to city of Brainerd Sewer and Water Services, and there are no plans for future services to this parcel. So, the applicant is requesting the creation of two parcels, one which would be 2.58 acres and the other one being 3.54 acres in size. Parcel A, which would be to the north, would not have frontage along a public street. Access to the property is proposed through a 30-foot wide easement on the east side of the property. The applicant is proposing in the future to build a single-family home on each parcel if the variance request for the lot split is approved. So, the first variance request for the proposed lot split is from zoning code Section 515-52-7, which is the minimum lot area and setback requirements for the rural residential district. The rural residential district requires that all parcels created shall have a maximum lot size of one acre. The applicant is requesting a variance from this requirement. As indicated before, these lots would be larger than one acre. All other lot size standards, length, width, are compliant with both the current zoning code and the future proposed zoning code as well. The second variance request is from subdivision ordinance Section 500-7-4F, lot frontage. This states that all lot shall have frontage on a public street that provides the required lot width at the minimum front yard setback, and flag lots are not, flag lots are prohibited. So, the applicant is proposing the creation of the 30-foot wide easement on the east side of the property for access to that north parcel, which is labeled Parcel A on the site map that was attached to the memo. Proposed parcel A meets the required lot width minimum standards of 100 feet for the rural residential district, however, it does not have direct access on Wise Road. So, with this, we did send this to the police chief and the fire marshal for possible emergency access, and wanted to get their opinions, and to see if there was any code requirements for this easement. The fire marshal indicated that there are no code requirements for the access road to parcel A, and this because they're only proposing two units to this. However, the fire marshal did recommend a minimum driveway width of 16 feet and a Class V compacted rating that would support the weight of a fire truck. The applicant indicated that he is definitely willing to do that. So, a few of the things that are required for a variance to be permitted is when they are in the harmony and general purpose and intent of the ordinance. The purpose of the RR district is to provide for large lot, single-family residential uses and open space areas in environmentally sensitive and high-natural amenity areas. Developments in the RR district are required to connect to city sewer and water service, developments to which municipal utilities cannot be extended are prohibited. As I indicated, the future of this property is for the RL2 district. So, staff believes this variance request supports the purpose and intent of the RR district, as well as the future district as well. Also, when the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff believes this variance request is supported by Goal 1 of Chapter 3 of the comprehensive plan, which states to provide a diverse mix of housing choices at all stages of life, income ranges, and ownership slash rental preferences. Policy 1, Goal 1 states to complement Brainerd's entry-level and affordable housing options by encouraging other move-up and mid-to-upper-level market-rate housing options. Section 515-7-2 of the subdivision ordinances, variances may be granted when the applicant for the variances establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. The property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance. Single-family dwellings are permitted within the RR district, so it is consistent with that. The plight of landowners due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. So, this parcel does have, as indicated on the site map, a large wetland area on the west side. This was delineated on the site plan. So, this would make it difficult to attempt to split the lot in any other way. So, creating that access easement on the east side of the property would be consistent with that. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to construct two single-family homes in the future, which is consistent with other properties in that area. So, as of writing, no one has contacted the community development department with concerns about the two variance requests. Staff recommends approval of the two variance requests, as staff believes their requested variances meet their requirements, as outlined in Section 515-7 of the Code of Ordinances, and is supported by the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Questions of staff? I have one question regarding the fire marshal comment, and are we able to articulate this evening what that compacted rating would be, what that design rating would be to be able to support the weight of a fire truck? Or can city engineer provide that for us or to the applicant?
So, that would probably would be, they could probably provide that when the applicant would submit for a building permit and such. They would have to put on their permit and their site plan how they plan on grading that, and they could probably review it at that time, Mr. Chair. But we don't have from the fire marshal or the city engineer today exactly what that would be.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, so, the easement there, I believe it's on the east side. Are they going to intend to put, they're putting a road through there to get to that second parcel, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Do you know if they have contacted the county about gaining access or access management there?
Quick clarification, technically, it'll be a driveway, not a road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, it'll be intended to be a driveway.
Okay.
As for access, I guess...
Yeah, they have not, they have not contacted the county about, you know, creating, I guess, an access part into that parcel. I guess, you know, within the city of Brainerd, each parcel, you know, is allowed one access into the property. So, it would be, I guess, up to county regulations on that.
And maybe I'm getting ahead of ourselves in the process, but that would be something for them to consider. I'm sure they already have.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? All right, well, hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:38, and ask the applicant, is the applicant here?
I believe, Mr. Lauter is actually online. Steph, if you could unmute him.
And, good evening, Mr. Lauter. Are you able to hear us?
How are you guys doing?
Good, thank you. We can hear you as well. So, I think if you might just kind of walk us through maybe some of the highlights of the lot split variance requests that you've got before us, I think there's conversation or question around the driveway easement and such, and so you might be able to help us think about that. From staff introductions here, it appears that you're willing to meet some of that road design that the fire marshal has recommended. Can you step us through your proposal, please?
Ah, yes, sir. Thank you. Yeah, like James had mentioned, we have an easement on that east side of the property that will gain access to the most northerly part of the property. But that access point will also be served as the access point to the front lot as well. Yes, I am in agreeance with compacting the road to above or at minimum standard of Crow Wing County and the city of Brainerd. I do plan on putting asphalt there myself personally, for the few, for the first few hundred feet leading back into the property, just to present a nicer appearance. And then, yeah, other than that, yeah, underground utilities going to both properties located in the back.
Very good. Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Hearing none, if you can be available, Mr. Lauter here, while we have discussion or other potential testimony here. At this point, I'm going to open up a comment. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on, to address the variances before the commission Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on the variance tonight? Yes, please, if you would come forward, state your name and your address, and address your comments to me.
My name is Angela Olson. I live at 7940 Wise Road, which is the property just west of that property. I am wondering when they're going to start building and how long they plan on building.
Okay, are there, excuse me, Ms. Lauter, are there relative issues around that? that that you'd like to bring to our attention?
Well, my daughter's in four H and she's learning hunting and stuff, so I'm just wondering for, we have twenty acres along that side, so we do bow hunting. So I'm just wondering if they're going to be building, if it's going to take them a long time.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that, and we'll get at that question. Anyone else care to speak to the application or for variance before us this evening? And is there anyone else that would care to speak to the application for variances here before us this evening? All right, thank you. Mr. Lauder, there's a question regarding the time of initiating construction and the duration of work, and I presume this would be independent of actual construction of the structures, but perhaps more related to work on the roads and such. So if, could you give us an insight of what you think your building plan is?
Yes, sir. I understand, and I would give total privacy during the bow hunting season. This year, my first, I, I plan to do this in two phases. It's a rather long driveway that I need to put back there. So this summer, I propose to build the driveway access to both parcels, and then I'd probably be submitting a building permit request to the city of Brainerd for one parcel next spring. But that's my timeline. Other than that, yeah, I would stay out of the woods around there, because, yeah, there is a lot of deer around that area, and I do respect the fact that they hunt. I do as well, and I would keep out of there, give them their privacy during those hunting periods, make sure no construction's going on.
Thank you. You did indicate that you were, you would intend to apply asphalt to the first few hundred feet of that driveway. It looks like that would probably take you halfway down parcel B, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is my intention. As James mentioned, there is a rather large, you know, wetland that we want to protect and stay away from on that west side. And my concern is that I want to put a more substantial pack there rather than just gravel or class five. I would like to upgrade that to asphalt just to ensure that, you know, we have a nice compacted surface to access.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And to that same point, for class five, going from that point at which the asphalt ends and in towards parcel A, I'm going to guess that the soils are going to be pretty wet, and they're probably pretty darn wet right now in that spring activity. Do you have a, a plan for, for maintaining that class five? If, if, if you're making the improvements to meet the fire marshal requirement, would you have a plan for being able to maintain the integrity of that over time?
It's, yeah, absolutely mandatory that it maintains the correct load, you know, capabilities that any heavy equipment or machinery would need to access it. So, yeah, whatever the city would recommend for me, I'm willing to abide by.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission for the applicant? And last call for members that are listening in or in person here, is there anyone else who would care to speak to this application on variances before the commission? A hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing at six forty-six, return the conversation to the commission. Is there any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Let me make a quick comment.
Director Chansky, please.
We didn't have in, in our staff report that James and I discussed after the packet went out, that we think would be, and any recommendation to approve that you might want to consider adding. As you, again, because this parcel is not served by city sewer and water, a septic would be required here and a lot, and, and allowed. The Crow Wing County does all our septic approvals, all our permitting. So we would just recommend that in addition to, any recommendation for approval of these variances would be that it also be conditioned upon approved septic plan by Crow Wing County before the, the lot is formally split. So we just want to make sure that, you know, Crow Wing County also signs off and says, yep, septics will work on these two lots before they're actually split.
And thank you, Director Chansky. And to be clear here, the county's interest is to ensure that as a result of the lot split, there is a primary and, and secondary septic site on there. Is that generally the gist? I'm probably not using the correct terms, but a primary one that would be developed in a backup.
And correct to make sure that the, you know, based off of their building plans, that the, the, you know, the septics are sized properly and there's just enough space on each lot to, you know, even if it's just a general, so obviously, as Mr. Lauder spoke to, you know, it might not be building until next year, if we can at least have, you know, a letter from the county saying, yes, both of these, you know, lots will support a septic system of a certain size prior to the lots being split. That's what we would recommend. Because of without, in a sense, without being, you know, if a lot can't actually hold a septic, then it really isn't any use, and it's not buildable. So we just want confirmation from the county that they would permit septics on these lots.
So I'm trying to think of the actionable words here. It, that's, that's, when you're saying prior to them being split, that would probably just be the, the recording phase? Is that kind of where you're thinking that's at, or?
Correct. So kind of, again, just administrative, some information how this administratively gets done. Once these variances are approved, and then they would be recorded, obviously, we'd have to record those before we as staff could actually administratively split this. This would be administrative split because going from one to two. What would happen, normally happens, is Mr. Lauder would have deeds drawn up to demonstrate the creation, the splitting of one lot, creation of a second lot, and then the county requires that the city of Brainerd sign off on, actually on those deeds. So pretty much what we were saying is before we would sign those deeds and then Crow Wing County record them, we would just want something from the county saying that, yes, they would allow septics and permit septics on those lots.
Perfect, thank you. Other discussion? I think it's, I think it's a very good gesture by the applicant to, to be able to improve the, the driveway to meet the fire marshal recommendations. I am struggling as to think about how that can be done or how to, how to even capture that in the form of a, of a recommendation here on the variance or a condition of the variance. I think the intentions are good and well-intended. I just don't know how to actually get that into, into a, a recommendation here in a condition of the variance that, that it would be something that staff could do. You would initially be able to get a, a good driveway compaction and serve that back lot well and, and parcel B as well, but over time, those will get weathered down and freeze-thaw activity and such of class five and being driven on. And at the point where that's no longer passable for, for a fire truck, then the access becomes an issue for fire safety, and so I'm, I'm not sure what to do with that. If anyone has a solution they can recommend, or, or we simply work with the staff recommendation with the addition of the contingency on the septic approval from Crow Wing County. So I'll put that out there, maybe request a, if there's a motion here, if anyone has a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion without the contingency of the driveway, so I'll leave it at that. If, if somebody has an idea of how to wordsmith an engineered driveway here that won't cost the applicant a ton of money and, and, if, I'm all ears, but if, if that fails, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, I would say make your motion.
All right, very good. So it's my belief that, that the variance request meets requirements outlined in section five one five point seven and also is supported by our comp plan. So with that, my motion will be to recommend both variance requests contingent upon the acceptance of an approved septic design by the county for our staff.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Woodward, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Very good. And Director Chansky, if you could advise the applicant on next steps, please.
Absolutely. So your recommendations on these variances will go before the city council for their formal consideration during their regular meeting on May second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lauder, and if you have questions, you can work with staff prior to that, that meeting. So at that, we are at agenda item seven A, review of council objections to the proposed zoning code. And Director Chansky, could you set that up for us, please?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the planning commission, again, just a reminder, you held your, the public hearing, and you made a recommendation to the city council on March sixteenth to, for the council to consider adopting the proposed zoning code. On March twenty-first, the council held the first reading of proposed ordinance number fifteen twenty-seven, which is the ordinance that would have adopted the proposed zoning code as well as a proposed zoning map. After holding that first reading, again, just a reminder, per city charter, every ordinance requires two readings before it can be considered for adoption. After that first reading, the council indicated that they would like to hold their own public comment period. They recognized that the count, that the planning commission did hold the stature, statutorily required public hearing, but they also wanted to hold a public comment here, comment period of their own, which was noticed in the dispatch. That was held on April fourth prior to the council considering, conducting the second reading of the ordinance and then considering adoption. After hearing a number of, handful of property owners regarding the chain, regarding their concerns about the change in zoning on their properties, the city council did not, ended up, there was no motion to conduct the second reading of ordinance number fifteen twenty-seven, so that ordinance ended up failing. And the council sent specifically the proposed zoning map back to the planning commission for review, and, and specifically what they were looking at are, are properties that would have a significant change in zoning to, between the new, the current zoning code and the new zoning code. And specifically what they were looking at, again, when it came to what are significant changes, we're really looking at parcels that would have had a change from, say, residential to commercial, industrial, residential, et cetera. Concerned that every parcel in the city did experience a change. Because we completely scrapped our current districts and created new districts, every city is, every parcel is receiving a new change, they're really looking at the parcels that would have a specific change maybe in use. So they're going from residential, commercial, industrial, residential, those kind of significant changes. So staff started doing, looking through, kind of comparing the two maps. James spent a little over, probably over ten hours comparing the two maps, our current map and the proposed map, trying to identify parcels that may have experienced a significant change. In the packet, and we'll be working through shortly, there's a list of seventy-three parcels that we identified that would experience a significant change. In your packet, in that list I have here, they've kind of broken down them, broke them down geographically just for ease, kind of understanding where they are. We provided some recommendations, which we'll work through with you shortly. And one of the things that we just wanted to, I know myself just wanted to touch on really quickly, and Jennifer Haskins here as well to talk about, before we dive into the list, and maybe you hear from any property owners that are here that would like to speak regarding the proposed zoning of their property, is that, first of all, not every parcel or property on the list of seventy-three, we would say are actual problem properties. Some properties are simple cleanups. They're ones that during the review, we saw, you know, in their, in their proposed zoning district, they wouldn't be a problem, but there might be a better district for that. For example, is there a few? Triangle Park in North Brainerd is currently zoned, to be zoned TN one. That is fine, it would not affect the operations of the park, but as, as, since we're doing this process, we might as well clean that up and grab it as park. Another one would be the YMCA is, is proposed to be zoned TN two, and in TN two district, the YMCA could operate, be conditional use, but we just thought because the YMCA's been there for so long, they're going through the capital campaign, they want to be there for much longer. Really PSP is a better zoning district for the YMCA, so that'd be another one that we could just clean up while we're doing, going through this exercise, but it's really not a problem right now. Some problems, there are some properties that are not changing in classification, specifically, you know, the residential property staying residential, or their commercial property staying commercial, but would fit better under a different district. For example, there are a few properties that we'll wa, work through, one of them, for example, being the, the North Star Apartments over by Cub. In the proposed zoning code, they're identified to be in a TN one. And in the TN one, it's residential, but a TN one limits at four units. So we recommend that being, you know, and you'll see in the list recommending that change to a TN two. In that list, you'll see also, we provided the future land use designation for all of those, you can see where that's supported. So there's a couple of those as well. And then there are a few properties, as came to light during the last council meeting, that do experience a significant change. Some properties off of Brook Street particularly, that are experiencing a change from currently being zoned in I one light industrial with a new proposed of CN two, contemporary neighborhood. Again, that was really guided by the comprehensive plan. One thing I also wanted to say quickly about the current, the zoning map as it was proposed. With that zoning map, just a reminder, it was built off really the future land use map that was adopted last May, so May of twenty twenty-one. Again, the future land use map, that is, that guiding document says where does the city want to be into the future? So that, in addition to the character areas, but the future land use map is really that foundation for which this new zoning code was built off of, and trying to ensure that every zoning district, as is proposed, fit the designation for that area as in the future land use map. Also additionally, we just wanted to, again, reiterate, any business or any property that is experiencing a change in zoning that would result in the current use becoming non-conforming, it is, there is no requirement, absolutely none, that that business pack up and be gone. They would become legal non-conforming. What does that mean? That means they could continue to operate as is in perpetuity. They could be there for another hundred years if they chose to. All of what, what the legal non-conforming status does do is it means, means, it means that they can continue, I should say, it means they can continue to maintain their properties as they are, they can put new siding on, they can put new roofs on, they can paint, they can do internal remodels. However, they cannot expand the property, so they couldn't put necessarily an addition on a building, they cannot expand the use of that building in, in, in any kind of way. And also, any furniture, further uses of that building would have to be either conform to this new zoning designation or be similar to that of its currently there. So for example, if it's a property that's, that, you know, is being zoned from commercial to residential, and there's a commercial use in that, using that property right now, it would have to be a similar, that, that, that use could leave, but a new use would have to be similar. So if it's a retail business, a retail business would have to come in. It couldn't be retail business leave and restaurant come in. It would have to be retail for retail. If there's a restaurant, restaurant for restaurant. And then, there was one other item I wanted to address on that, and I'm blanking. So there, that, that's would be non-conforming, they could continue to operate. I guess that's the one thing I also wanted to point out. The one thing with non-conformities is if the use ceases to be in operation for more than three hundred and sixty-five days, so if there's a commercial use in that, on that property, that commercial use leave. use leaves. Either a conforming use comes in, or the par, property sits vacant for more than 365 days, that non-conforming use is forfeited. So before I just turn this over to you, Mr. Chair, before we walk through it, I think really kind of, one of the major items as we work through this list tonight, really kind of what it comes down to, one of the ultimate questions, is coming down to the future land use map, is the future land use map correct? Is the zoning, is, I should say, is the zoning code correct? And do you believe that if it is not, is the future land use map correct? Is really kind of comes down to the ultimate questions regarding each one of these parcels. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you before we kind of dive into the nitty-gritty here. And actually, I should say, is there anything, Jennifer, that you wanted to add? There's a button up front.
Green. No, there you go. All right. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The thing that I would add, and I, I did not assemble this list, but we actually back at our firm went through the same or very similar exercise to make sure that we were cross-checking with each other. There are some properties on the list that we actually attempted, that it's a significant change, and the point of the significant change was actually to make it more consistent with what's already happening there and be more conforming to the circumstances or the, the physical environment. So some of the PSP properties, for example, PSP is new. It wasn't a district that we had prior. And so zoning at PSP was really intended to actually, it represents a significant change, but it was intended to actually better represent what was happening and bring it into closer conformance. So significant change doesn't always mean negative in this case, and I just want to point that out because clearly at the city council meeting, we heard some property owners who are concerned because that significant change, they believe has a negative impact on their property. But there are also many properties on this list that I would actually say the significant change represents a very positive change from the standpoint of it's, it's better conforming to what the circumstances are. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Haskamp, and welcome. Questions of staff, based on the introduction that we just heard?
I got a question.
Mr. Erickson, please.
So as you're, as you're going through that, it sounds like I was taking notes. It looks like I wrote down three different categories. You said kind of the, just the general cleanup, like the park and things like that, the YMCA. I put category two, there's a better, more appropriate zone, so we don't create legal non-conformings. And then three, some of those significant changes. And it sounds like a fourth, a subcategory, is of the significant changes, there's some that are not necessarily negative significant, but they're more positive significant. Do you, can you give me a sense of how many in that third category of significant changes are kind of that positive subset? Is that a, and if you don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean, is that all of them? Is it half of them? Because of those, I would say we should set those aside. If, is it a number that we could reach out to those businesses and explain that and share that with them? Maybe they'll be happy with it and we can move forward.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I couldn't estimate right now. I'm not sure if David could, he put together the list.
And that's fine. I don't need a number, but just, that's my thinking on that, is if there's certain numbers that, of the significant change category that it's 10, maybe we can just pick up the phone and call them and, you know, explain the changes and...
And honestly, there have only been at, you know, we had, I think, three or four property owners who actually approached the city council. They're the ones that had that more significant change, that had concerns. Those are the only ones, you'll see actually in, all the ones on the list that was provided for you and I have on the screen, the ones in red, those are the ones where the city actually received contact. Everything else are ones that we as staff pulled out. As to whether or not, you know, significance change is good, bad, I think that might be a little bit of the eye of the beholder, you know, from the staff. I think we, you know, our recommendation was to adopt that zoning map because we felt that it was, it was a good representation of the comprehensive plan and, and the, and the direction that the city is going from the council perspective and the Planning Commission in the last 18 months worth of work into this code. So from that perspective, I think, you know, from, you know, we wouldn't have recommended that you as a Planning Commission and the city council adopted that zoning code if we didn't believe that that zoning code, or that zoning map was, was the correct direction.
Other questions of staff? With none, David, hand that back to you and Ms. Haskamp to go ahead and step us through what you've compiled and the significance of that and what decisions we can make tonight.
Absolutely. And I'll just ask, Mr. Chair, quickly, as, you know, we discussed prior, if there are those in the public that would like to speak regarding the property, do you want them to do it when that property comes up, or would you like them to speak prior to us diving into this list?
I think it might be more, it might be more helpful if we were to hear the comments of affected property owners on what, what they see right now, because I think the comments that they offer us might help us think about the package as a whole, and they may apply more broadly than just the Rome. So I think with that point of order, maybe I ask if individuals like to come up and, and that have concerns about the proposed zoning for their parcels, come up to the podium, state your name and address, please, and address the commission with your comments.
If you don't mind, I'd like to leave a little. These are maps of the parcels that would be affected that I own.
Thank you.
There's another map there on Washington Street. My name is Robert Despot. I'm a former resident of Brainerd. I now live in Fort Ripley. I own two parcels of industrial land, that's rated industrial at this point, and is being used as industrial, that will be affected by the change in the map. And if you don't mind, I'll read from what I said to the council on the 4th. The pieces that affect me, I've owned for over 40 years in Brainerd and have operated businesses there. The first parcel is on Brook Street where Pike Plumbing and Heating is, and they've been operating there since 1982. The proposal is to change that zoning from industrial to residential, which would make the business a non-conforming use. 12 years ago, the city council tried to change that zone from industrial to residential, and there's a copy of the notes that the Planning Commission rejected it at that time, saying it would make no sense to make a conforming use into a non-conforming use. Actually, that area was, was the first industrial park in South Brainerd, established way back in the early 40s, when the Army actually owned that building as a dry milk processing plant. It's not just a little tiny business, it's a pretty huge building. If you had to tear it down and put a house there, it'd probably cost you a million dollars to take it down with all the cement and brick that's involved there. Also on that parcel, and he wasn't able to make it here tonight, is Gull Lake Sand Blasting and Powder Coating. They've rented from me in the past, and now they own their own building where Wetzel Auto Repair is located. He runs a real clean operation. Anybody who's ever gone by there, you don't see a mess. Everything's pretty much inside the building. And I'm kind of speaking for him. He did speak at the city council meeting opposing it also. The second parcel that I own is on Washington Street, where Forest Fuels owns the property and Brainerd Hydraulics operates. They've been there since 1980. Hydraulics does heavy duty repair on heavy trucks and equipment. And changing the zoning from industrial to commercial would make that business non-conforming. You have to be in industrial to work on heavy equipment. And just as a sideline, that's probably the only place in Brainerd where logging trucks can come in during the winter with their legal overload, because they're right on Highway 210, say, to get their hydraulics repaired. You can't just drive around on city streets with 103,000 pound loads of logs. So it's very convenient. Logging is the third largest industry in the state, I believe, still. And it, we serve a lot of customers there, including the city of Brainerd, Camp Ripley, Crow Wing County, all the local townships and municipalities come in there for their work also. It's just a convenient spot for them to have their repairs done. Not to mention on, on that Washington Street parcel, that's, that was zoned industrial, joins the industrial land that the railroad owns, and they still use that parcel for a staging area for all the rail repair and signage and signal repair in going through city of Brainerd and Baxter. So quite often, you'll see cranes there lifting their signals and tracks and so forth. And so industrial is actually what it's being used as. I believe the goal for, for city planning should be to encourage more development, which by listening to what's going on with this commission, you're, you're for that. And the simplest way to keep businesses and employment in town is, is keep the ones you got and keep them happy. And I'm asking the council just to leave those two industrial properties zoned industrial, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Despot. Anyone else? Yes, thank you. Please state your name and your address, please.
I'm Kevin Gruber. I live in Baxter, 5216, Ashdale Lane in Baxter. I'm the former owner of Pike Plumbing, and I'm here in behalf of the current owner, which couldn't be there. I'm sure that this zoning is probably three-fourths, or maybe seven-eighths, or best part of it is for the good of the, of the city. I guess I'm just not sure why this property on Brook Street has to be changed from industrial to what, I guess, I don't know, is it residential or commercial, or whatever it is. I know the current owner is talking about purchasing the property from Bob, and if he does buy the property, he's talking about possibly building a garage for the vehicles, because they all sit outside, and sometimes kids down the trail like to paint stuff. We have a semi-trailer that keeps getting some nice designs on it every time, and every time we painted it, it gets colored in a color. But I think we're the only plumbing and heating company in the city of Brainerd, and we'd sure like to stay there. I guess I don't see if there's anybody that's complained about Pike Plumbing being in the location that they're at, that there's any reason why we'd want to change the location or anything like that. So I guess I don't see why it shouldn't stay as it is. So that if we do want to buy the property, we could do whatever, you know, that's within the standards of the city to add on to it, or change the outside of it, or add a garage, or whatever. So I guess that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber.
Can I add one more thing?
You may, if I can, just hang on to other, I would like to hear from others, please. Anyone else care to speak on their issues? And, 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 as I said, we'll come back to you. So thank you. I got you, got your spot. Your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Strobel, and I do own Gull Lake Sand Blasting and Powder Coating and Brook Street there. Bob didn't know I was here, but I do live in Fort Ripley also right now, but I owned this property in Brainerd for quite a while. And I do understand how you say that we can still work in forever, as it's, even if we do change the zoning, we'd still be able to keep it as like a sand blasting and powder coating business forever. But my concern is, you know, in 10 years or something, if I want to sell this business, and I sell it to somebody, and they may decide to take it out of there and move it to a different location, then I'm sitting with a building here that's, you know, pretty limited as to, if somebody couldn't buy it and try to add on to it or change it, because now we're doing a conditional use permit. And it's definitely, I think it would, it would make my building worth considerably less, be a lot harder to sell, you know, find somebody else to try to get it in there. They'd have, there's a good chance they're going to want to add on. I might want to add on to it. In fact, I would, I would like to, if the price of everything would come down a little bit, but, and I know they said if we changed the zoning, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I hope you guys take that in consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Strobel. Yes, please come forward. State your name and address.
I'm Craig Maddich, 5809 Clearwater Road, Baxter. I have the building right across from Pike's. Been there for 48 years. You guys talk about future plans. Nothing has changed. There's been two houses that have been built there 32, 35 years ago, that are joined to my property across from the bike trail. And they put up a fence that you can't see them. That's the only thing that's changed on that property in 50 years. So, I mean, as far as advancing to the future, I see no building there. So there's no reason why anybody should change what is already there. I am doing building improvements right now. I have all the, everything for the roof to be done. All I'm waiting for is glue, which is backordered, and getting the building painted across the street, which was rented. I had it on contract for a deed to a guy, which he did not fulfill his contract, so I had to take the property back, which I will say, yes, it is a mess, but it will be cleaned up this summer. And as far as changing it, I feel, you know, we've been trucking business in there for 40-some years, and nothing's ever changed. So if they do that, it'll eliminate me to get trucks in there. So that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Despot, you had a couple of additional questions or points that you'd care to make. It'd be a great time to do that.
I just meant to add, Brainerd Hydraulics, you know, they said that you, you can leave the existing building as is. Long-term plan would possibly be to add on and increase the size for a small machine shop, because we do a lot of machine work with hydraulic repair and so forth. And I realize you could go through all kinds of permits. You probably would need a permit, obviously, to add on, even if it was industrial. But if it's not industrial, I don't believe they would allow machining as, as an add-on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krambek, is there anyone else online?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think we've heard a number of issues here regarding how proposed zoning change would affect some of the existing businesses relevant to the Brook Street, currently I-1 zoning district, and also the Brainerd Hydraulics on Washington, currently zoned I-1. So with that, thank you for that, those comments, because I think they're very helpful to help us think through the challenge we have before us tonight. So at this point, Director Chansky, could you please guide us through some of the issues that, on the parcels as a whole, that we've looked at, and then we can have some focused conversation on that?
All right. So would you like me, Mr. Chair, just to clarification, just walk through the list one by one, or how would you? Ultimately, I think we are looking for, I should, maybe I'll say, where we're hoping to be at the end of this evening is to have a recommendation regarding all these parcels that are in your list, of whether or not to keep them as they are currently zoned, or to have them changed, and what to have them changed to, which will then go to the council as your recommendation. So I don't know if there's a specific direction, if you just want to go top to bottom, or how like, again, some of these are probably going to go faster than others. So I guess I'll look to you, Mr. Chair, how you'd like me to lead you through this.
Yeah, you know, I might turn that to you and just, you guide us. If, if we want to be able to have conversation around the, the parcels that you were contacted, would probably be a good place to start. There's a scattering of those, but there's also some clustering as well that may allow us to handle those. And then maybe step through some of the remaining pieces there that maybe have, have value to have conversation around.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I might also...
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I might also just add one other thought. I just want to clarify the original statement of positive versus negative, because I think it might help in terms of the conversation. When we look at this list, there are certain parcels that they may be viewed as a significant change, but the new zoning district actually matches the current use and operation under the new zoning district. In those cases, the zoning is significant, if you will, but it's still reflecting the activities that are currently on the site. In those cases, most of those, we didn't receive any comments, obviously, because they're not losing anything, right? The zoning changed, and it's significant in terms of what the district looks like, but the use that's there still matches. In the case of the testimony that we heard this evening, we have a zoning district that now is not matching the current use or operation. Those are the properties that we heard from. And though, so if I might, I think that might be a good way for us to kind of look through those lists by geographic area and say that the red are folks that we heard from, number one. But then number two, when we look at this list, the majority of the parcels are still consistent with what we've proposed to zone it to, and maybe focus in on the areas where that actually might be different, where the use itself today wouldn't match what the proposed zoning is. So just a, hopefully, maybe a way to go through the list a little bit faster.
Agreed. So please, take us on that, take us on that venture.
Okay. So we'll just start first, obviously, with the, I think especially since there are some here, we'll start with those properties that we got addressed. People reached out to us first, we'll start with those, and then we'll move to the other ones. So the first parcel on your list, it's PID 41320505. This is off of Delwood Drive, and I'll just quick. Thankfully, I'm well-versed at this point where most of these parcels are. So this is a parcel you may be familiar with. Again, we're off of Delwood Drive. It's this parcel right here. In the current zoning, this, it's currently zoned general, I-1 light industrial. It was rezoned a number of years ago because someone had a plan with it. Had never, anything's happened with it over the years. We've had people call us about the property, interested in things. We had to have someone who had recently purchased the property looking, I think, with an intent to put up some kind of mini-storage, but at this point, we haven't received any permitting. We really haven't really heard from them in probably, what, six months?
Six to eight months.
Six to eight months. Under the proposed zoning district, it is proposed to be RL2, Rural Living 2. And in the list you can see, if you wanted to keep it similar to what it is now, our recommendation would be general, again, just GI, General Industrial. However, to make it compliant with the Future Land Use Map designation, we do, as staff, believe that the RL2 designation is correct, again, as it is a vacant lot. We haven't actually received anything about that in the future. If someone wanted to potentially do another use, they could come back and ask for rezoning, but due to the fact that the lot is vacant, has been vacant, we are recommending that it be left as RL2, as already proposed. And I think what we'd be looking for, Mr. Chair, I'll also clarify from action, I think by the end of this, we will be looking for a motion. I think as we look through, go through this, I think we'll look for some consensus on what you might want to recommend to the council that it be zoned, so at the end of the night, you can just have one motion, you don't have to make an individual motion on every single property. And then I will record what your recommendation is in the spreadsheet.
I would agree with that, that approach, and I would also, you know, in addition to the comments that you made, be adjoining properties are residential for this one as well. And so that would at least initially zone it in harmony with what's around it. So I personally would support that RL2 designation. Other objections to that? Mr. Goram, please.
I would agree with that, that RL2 is the right designation.
Head nodding, we can, we can move on.
Okay. The next property is 219 West Laurel Street, and I will jump there really quick. This property is currently a fourplex right across the Laurel Street Bridge, right next to Mississippi Terrace. It is currently zoned, is this property, actually, I think it's both of these parcels, correct, James? Or is it just the one parcel?
That parcel to the east of it is actually partially part of there, it's partially part of the Delwood property.
Okay.
Just could be cleaned up at the ground level.
However, it's currently zoned R3. The new proposed zoning district is TN1. So it was still actually, this is one of those where it still would be conforming under the new code, because you can go up to four in a TN1. The main thing that they've reached out about is they were looking at potentially adding a second garage, so they had garage space for both of their, all four of their tenant spaces. Right now, they have one in a TN2. They're limited to 500 square feet of accessory structure space, so they would have to get a variance, so that was just mainly their concern. This whole area is a larger conversation, and you can kind of see how we mapped it. We are actually recommending an actual change from what was in the zoning code originally. Again, this area was designated as TN1. After further review, we actually are actually recommending this whole area be zoned Town Center, due to the fact, again, that multifamily, there are some businesses in the area, Mississippi Terrace, which is the parcel right above it, currently R3, again, in a TN1 would be non-conforming, and a T, a Town Center would be conforming, as well as the properties to the east of this parcel, this as well is owned by Northern Pines, so in a TN1, that would be non-conforming. So by making this Town Center, it would be conforming as well. So we're actually recommending that this whole area here, as well as these properties along on the north side, all be zoned Town Center. So maybe this would be an opportunity, Mr. Chair, to kind of look at a swath of properties at once. These three properties on the north side, actually, if you look at the map, again, when you get really granular, some of these parcels get really small, actually missed being zoned entirely. So we are recommending that these three parcels, as well as all the parcels, these one, two, three, four parcels here, be zoned as Town Center. That way, most of the uses would become conforming, or would stay conforming, as well as things like setbacks and stuff, would be best fit under a Town Center versus like a TN2. So that would be, which all of these parcels here. I believe that's correct, right, James?
Yep, that's correct.
So our current Town Center, doesn't that, doesn't that end this block?
It currently ends at the river, correct.
Then we've got the public PCP, right, to the river in effect.
So when we looked at this, James and I looked at this, and we kind of went from a number of different directions on how does this work? Yes, it's a little clunky, and generally, right now, Town Center kind of ends at the river, that's a nice, clear, Town Center's done. However, when you looked at, once you got over this area, it became kind of clunky because you have this mix of some low, medium-density, high-density residential and commercial uses. You know, what we would have been looking at is like a litany of different, you know, on the south side, we have some TN2s, but on the north side, maybe we have general commercial, again, and there's still some more residential, and you've got PSP on the school district on the other side. So we felt like looking at what, if we can wrap it all into one bubble versus having a litany of different zonings, that Town Center did make the most sense for this. Also gives this area the most flexibility as we move into the future, and what does, you know, expansion of that Laurel Street area look like? I should say it's also...
Comments or thoughts? Yes, Mr. Erickson, please.
I'm agreeable to that. Just clarify again, by doing that, that reduces the potential legal non-conforming?
Correct. There's one parcel that currently exists, this is Paradigm Auto. They're an interesting case, again, in that situation, in a Town Center, they would be non-conforming, but the only way to keep them conforming would to make them general commercial. So that would be an opportunity, if you want to do the north side as general commercial. Again, looking at what is the future of that, kind of what does the Future Land Use Map indicate? That's what we found, like Town Center did fit the best, but they are one that would still be non-conforming in that situation.
Mr. Chair, just to add or follow up, because I think that was part of the concern coming out of council was, we talked a lot about, by doing this zoning code update, it reduces a lot of the legal non-conform, and we, you know, that's clear, but there are some that were creating new ones. So any way we can go back and, you know, not go back, but reduce those legal non-conforming, and if that, if this does that, which it looks like it does, then I'd be agreeable to it.
I concur, yeah. You know, I'm troubled by trying to squeeze Paradigm into that box. I like the idea of the general commercial across the street from, from basically the office building and bringing that back to the, to the bridge on that north side. I think that might help us in that regard, and then deal with the properties to the south separately. I'm not, I'm not clear, David, on how a TN2 would make the, the property on the south side that's, that we've talked about here, 219 West Laurel, how that would make that non-conforming, or they'd have to apply for a variance for an accessory structure?
So TN was, so they, I don't think, and...
Yeah, I could, I could probably answer that.
James, you've been dealing with this one more.
So, so right now, the issue is, it's located in R3, which has pretty stringent setbacks for an accessory structure. He was interested in the TN1 because the accessory structure was going to be, you know, having a setback of only five feet rather than fifteen feet. If we want to group this together in the Town Center District, so we're not spot zoning, the Town Center allows for only 500 square feet. I know this applicant would probably prefer a TN2 District, because that would allow him to build the garage with a setback that he wants without, without acquiring a variance. You know, I did speak to him about that variance process. He didn't seem too adverse to being able to do that. It is something that does seem like it would be consistent with, with the Town Center District, because we allow apartments in the Town Center District, we'd allow garages. So it does like, it does sound like a variance that would potentially make sense in that area. But, you know, the applicant, or the, the person that I did discuss with this on the phone, would probably prefer it as a TN2 District.
And it strikes me that, you know, this, west of the river is, if we think about our character areas, that, to me, it feels different than a Town Center feel on the east side and around, around here and the, and the greater buffer around, around the Main Street. And so it, I don't know if, if we gain much for solving the issue at this particular problem by going to Town Center as opposed to keeping it in that TN, TN2 category. That, I don't know, help, help me think about that, that, does that, does that break anything to have it a TN2?
So I can, I'll answer that, Mr. Chair. I think, again, when we were looking at this, trying to make things nice packages, but, you know, if, on the south side, I can't 100% percent speak to this property here and the other property is owned by Northern Pines. I don't know exactly what the operations are there, if this is offices, if it's outpatient, what exactly. So it should fit in a TN2, should. So you could, I think, if we did these parcels here as a TN2, that would work. Right now, again, it's better than the TN1, because north...
Mississippi.
Mississippi Terrace would be non-conforming. I will add one other parcel you have in here is, is this parcel over here, 41040730. I think in the current code, it's B2, I believe.
Yep, and the current is B2.
It is a, it is an office building, so we recommend TN2 for that one. Again, just, it is residential, everything around it, so keeping that residential but allowing that office use. So I think we, you know, we could easily do, it wouldn't necessarily be negative to do TN2 on the south side, and then maybe some kind of, maybe, maybe a B4 commercial on the north side. Again, just keeping, remember what B4 does open up, a lot of different uses and whether or not those uses are appropriate on that north side. And with, yeah, generals, general, what did I say?
B4.
B4, sorry, general commercial. I was looking at the old code. But general commercial and setbacks and things, you know, I'm not sure if this building here would meet, meet the general commercial setbacks right now, but it would still, wouldn't make a non-conforming use. So, you know, Mr. Chair, I think I would be, you know, comfortable recommending that these parcels on the south side be TN2, and these three parcels on the north be general commercial, if the, if the Planning Commission is comfortable with that.
Any thoughts on that from the commission? Mr. Goram, please, this is your neighborhood, too.
Well, it is, it is my hood. I would just say that the portion north of Laurel there, I think if you do a general commercial, we lose input in the future in terms of what can go in there. And I think we're going to be in a better position if we keep a little more control in terms of what goes in there. That's just my thought. That's, yeah, I'll leave it at that. I don't think we just want to have that wide open. I think we want to, would rather have somebody go through a variance process to get something that's going to be in harmony. That's my thoughts. I think either TN2 or the Town Center, I could work with either one of those.
Any reflections on that?
Mr. Chair, I tend to agree on this one here. This one could go either way, and you have this philosophical debate of, do you zone kind of for what's there, or do you zone for what could go there that you don't want there, right? So I tend to side towards the little bit more conservative side on this, and then versus the spot, you know, versus the spot zoning. So I personally am kind of on the side of Town Center, just extending over, but I'm not going to die on the hill on this one. We have a lot more, we have a lot of other properties that are going to take up a lot of time here tonight, so I'm okay either way.
Here's a nice spread in the data.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I may really quickly, just, again, to clarify, this parcel, 41040741, in a TN2 should be mostly conforming, as they are all like small office-based businesses in a TN2 that are allowed. So it'd be more of the, the issue again with a Towns, anything pretty much other than a general commercial, it would be the Paradigm Auto situation.
Ms. Woodward, please.
Northern Pines, right now, in that area is operating, I believe it's a supervised residential treatment center. So there is such a broad use of that space that we're looking at right now. Really what's driven the use of that space is affordability, I think, and things have gone in there where they may not have fit into other areas simply because they can afford to go into those places. So that's, I'll contribute on that.
I've kind of, kind of already expressed my support for the Town Center. I mean, it does create the one non-conforming, but overall, I think it, I think it does stay in keeping with that neighborhood. There's a lot of commercial use, the residential use that is there is very dense. So I think I, I just stay consistent with that support for the Town Center.
Read body language. Okay.
I'll say Town Center.
All right, Town Center, I think is your consensus on this parcel.
And I just wanted to confirm also for this parcel, 41040730, confirm that, are you okay with the art, the TN2 zoning on that one, though?
Can you point that one out on the map here?
It's highlighted.
The green square.
So pretty much Town Center would now end at Northwest Fourth. Again, this one's proposed TN1, but because it is an office, we're just recommending TN2, it'll allow that use to be conforming without really altering, negatively altering the character of the surrounding neighborhood.
And the surrounding neighborhood is?
TN1.
As a resident of the neighborhood, I'd say TN2 is good. It recognizes that it's a neighborhood with some small business. Yeah.
Okay, there you are. You've got the consensus on that one. Yeah, there you are, you've got consensus on that one.
Okay. Just bear with me for one moment, I don't know how I got rid of that. Okay, we're good. Okay, um, we've got consensus there. We will move on to the next properties that we, um, on our list, uh, that we're contacted about. These properties, uh, here are all vacant properties, uh, PIDs, uh, four one one seven zero five, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and, uh, uh, four one one six zero five zero three, four one one seven zero five zero nine, four one one six zero five zero four. All owned, um, by, uh, uh, Anderson Brothers. And, um, I think it's actually telling Natural Resource Management, and they'll bring us over here. So we're talking on the, uh, along Highway two ten. Here. And let the parcels pull up. Um, but if you were to go into the current zoning map that's in your packet, and I actually will pull that up really quickly. You'll see that all these parcels are kind of a hodgepodge of zoning under the current map. Uh, Mr. Anderson did reach out, uh, and just shared that hi- his request would be that those parcels, when they were annexed in, um, you know, he specifically worked with the city, um, to try to have this kind of zoning. Um, try to encourage development in this type of pattern. Um, so we would, all his request was that the city would consider leaving it in a similar format. Um, on the future land use map, uh, you will see that there is actually some support to his request. As you'll see, most of these parcels up in here, let me try to zoom in here. Our zone, this is mixed residential in this area. These were those R one, A R two parcels. These are like those B four parcels are general commercial. This parcel and this parcel down here are identified as currently as industrial. This parcel here is also currently identified as commercial, even though it's a residential use. So these are all identified as commercial. So, um, after looking at that, our recommendation, um, you know, again, right now, they're all proposed to be zone RL one. Again, the intention of, again, with that idea of zoning them RL one is that they're vacant. Let's kind of leave them, preserve them, and then as a proposal for development would come forward, then we could zone to the appropriate district. We're not, you know, just zoning something and then potentially having the hands tied. And so you, you'll see, um, is in the packet, again, we identified what some of those, um, comparables would be. And for the most part, we recommended, again, general, um, to follow along with that. Some residentials, um, three parcels being RL one. And then the rest of them being general commercial. We understand there is some general, uh, some, uh, light industrial uses in there. But again, looking at the future land use map, the general commercial meets better for that area, what is, what it's guided as commercial. And then if you wanted, if an industrial use would have wanted to go into one of these parcels here or any of the other parcels, they could always ask for rezoning. The one that we are recommending it being different is this parcel. I don't know if you can see very well, I'll hi- I'll highlight it. So I should say, uh, these three parcels here, uh, we're recommending staying as RL one. These parcels on here are becoming general commercial. And then this parcel here, five one one seven zero one one, staying as RL one as well. Again, we recognize that the future land use map shows that being general, being commer- guided commercial. But we think RL one, again, it leaves it open to the future and it allows the current use being residential to become conforming. Currently, this property is a residential use and zoned industrial. Um, and we have had issues with that in that the, um, I believe it's Mr. Anderson's, um, I don't think Mr. Anderson himself lives there. I think one of his sons lives there. And they've tried to do different things on the property and we've had to tell them no, just because it's zoned industrial. So our recommendation would leave that parcel as RL one. And again, if they ever wanted to change it from residential in the future, again, they could just come and ask to have that rezoned to, you know, either, uh, industrial or commercial use based off of, you got industrial on one side and commercial on the other. So those are recommendations for the Anderson properties, and I'll take any questions the commission has on those properties.
If, could you project the, um, the, the aerial imagery? And I, 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 I would like to talk about, uh, five one three and five one four. And if you could turn on the wetlands layer, um, help us think about that a little bit. Public.
Soils layer or the hydraulic soils, is that what you're looking for?
No, it would be the wetlands, wetland inventory. Different from what, uh, public, public layer on there and it would be a subset of that. Oh, there you go, public, um, and then turn on. Is it not there?
Went to FEMA, there's the water features right there.
Yeah, water features and then.
Any wetlands?
National Wetland Inventory, right above that.
This map is wildly, historically wildly inaccurate. But it gives you, the topo might be the most accurate one.
Well, I, the, the point I, I wanted to make is, is the value of, of, um, maintaining a residential use on the north side of two ten for those two parcels. Um, and it could have, it could have a, um, a, 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 a commercial use. It would be, you know, like a CN two or something to that effect. Um, in tho- in those particular areas. So it's consistent with the residential feel of all of the other properties that were in the comp plan. Some of the, some of the development is probably limited on, um, on, on that, uh, on that north side by some of the wetlands. So maybe, maybe on fourteen, five fourteen, um, yeah, thank you, James. That one there could probably stay in some sort of a general commercial. Cause it would be hard to connect that to a larger residential development plan. But perhaps five thirteen might be good to retain, um, a residential element to that zoning. You know, an RL one would probably work for the time being. Rather than just put it as general commercial and be able to split on that very obvious feature of Highway two ten. And anything to the south of that could be the general commercial, which is consistent with the uses around it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to comment on that. I guess from a staff's perspective, we would, we wouldn't not, we would not recommend, even though two ten bisects these properties, they're till technically considered one property on both sides of it. I think at some point, obviously, Min Dot came in and bought right of way through these properties. And so the only concern here is if it's, it's kind of difficult to half z- pro- zone pro- one parcel, two different things. Considering that because it's technically one parcel, apart from either rezoning or maybe even a PUD, you can't, someone could not develop the north side, for example, of five thirteen, and then do something else on the south side. Because it's still technically one property and vice versa. On five fourteen, you couldn't develop something here and then later decide to do something separate on the north side because they're still technically one parcel. So they'd either need to be split first, or maybe like through a PUD, then you could develop them, um, differently. But I think from just a management perspective, it'd be simpler to have both halves be the same thing.
Right. So, so, um, the PUD overlay could overlay a portion of a parcel. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I was thinking more of they would come in for a PUD for the whole parcel and saying, we want to do this on this side and this on this side.
Okay, thank you. Other comments on the cluster of, uh, properties here on the north side? Or not the north side, excuse me, all of the, uh, Anderson Brother parcels?
Can you put the map back up there that you just had? And, um, you just really quickly, again, run through what you're proposing. I have RL one for.
So, so these three.
G C.
So, uh, five one, uh, five twelve, five sixteen, five fifteen. We're all, I think, we're recommending are, just keep them as RL one. Um, especially because they're unplatted. So that's another big p- part of that is they're unplatted. So leaving them RL, as RL one is probably the, uh, the best there. Five thirteen, five fifteen, five oh three, five oh nine, making those general commercial. And then five eleven, again, also keeping us RL one.
And does, Mr. Chair, does that, that maintains that residential component for the parcels to the north that you were, does that kind of address what you were getting at?
The, the RL one does not hit those two that I was, that thirteen and fourteen are cross the highway and a sizable or a usable, uh, significant enough portion of that is above and, and adjacent to.
Okay.
The RL one proposed for, for the other, uh, forties.
I guess, personally, I'm comfortable with, um, how staff has laid that out.
I would agree with that, I'm comfortable with the staff, our recommendations on this.
Yeah, I, this is one of those undeveloped, I, I mean, a whole lot of things could happen here. You could al- they could always come in and ask for a rezone. Uh, I'm, I'm tending to agree with, uh, the recommendation as of right now. Yeah, just don't, I don't see any good reason to make this more complicated than it has to be or spot zone this, but.
Think you have your consensus?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Erickson, please.
Um, before we move on to the next, might I suggest that we, um, handle next, the parcels that these fine folks have brought up in order to allow them to get back to their lives?
I had those next, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good, thanks.
We'll take your suggestion, Ted.
So the next parcel will be, uh, ten twenty Washington Street as, uh, Mr. Erickson just pointed out. So that is the, again, that is the property that Brainerd Hydraulics, um, does sit on. Again, it is currently zoned, uh, I one light industrial. The cur- the proposed zoning is, uh, commercial corridor. A potential equivalent to this could be general industrial, although we are recommending more of a, of a makers in employment might fit actually this property a little better, just the size of the property and what it's being used as. Um, under makers in employment, the use on the property would be a conditional use, so it is be, it would still be conforming. Again, we, looking at the, um, the rest of the corridor, what the future land use map, um, indicates. You know, we as staff still believe that general, that commercial corridor really is the best use for this property for the long-term future. But let's leave it at that, I guess, Mr. Chair, or to, uh, you and the rest of the commission, what you would like to recommend for this property. Uh, I think I will just add one thing, um, just again, because I think context is important as well. Even if these properties, for example, were to be left as general industrial, I think it's important to point out that even as general industrial, the uses may no longer, may stay conforming. But the actual, the buildings and structures on these parcels are non-conforming. Due to they don't meet the setback requirements, um, and other such things, because of the size of where the structures sit and the requirements of things like the setbacks of like a general industrial or even a makers in employment district. So there would still be some difficulty to these properties if zoned industrial for any future expansion.
And to be, to be clear, if, if you could repeat as I've, um, I've lost one ear in my process here of dead batteries. But I, um, um, would you be able to add a, um, a, a, an additional building? I think Mr. Despot had, had, um, said he had a desire to add a m- a, a machine shop in the future. Would that be something that could happen under the industrial or the makers in employment?
The concern in that situation, again, is the actual, not the use, but the actual lot requirements.
Right.
And whether or not it can be, meet setbacks and such. And again, I don't have, you know, we have to know what exactly proposing, but just looking at it, um, from here, I don't think it would meet the setback requirements of either the makers in employment or the general industrial. Again, the commercial corridor actually encourages things to be up against the property line. So it would be much easier to do improvements to this property under a commercial corridor, um, designation. The, again, the only issue is then the current use becomes non-conforming.
Thank you. All right.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Erickson, please.
So I'm sorry, currently I one or?
Correct.
And then as we have it proposed? TN two and?
Commercial corridor.
Okay, all of it commercial.
All of the commercial corridor.
And right now, no issues with the use, however, expansion would have.
In the, in the current ordinance and in the proposed ordinance, if made and if left industrial, the use doesn't become a problem, but any expansion might become a prob- would likely be, be an issue. If left, if, if left as the recommended commercial corridor, um, expansion becomes much easier because the lot, lot requirements are much looser, um, but then the use becomes non-conforming.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say that.
Mr. Graham, please.
I, 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 I think that's a commercial corridor, and I think that's what we, we want to see. I don't think, I think that we don't want to see it expanded as an industrial area. I think we have industrial areas in our town that would be more appropriate to expand a business like this. I, I don't doubt the value of the business at all. But I don't think it complements what we're trying to do in developing a commercial corridor. So I, I, and then I guess that tricky thing, did we, about expanding the use? Or do we go to keep it a good commercial corridor where you can't expand the use, right? But you can, you can change how you use the lot, if I, if I followed all that correctly. So generally, I'm saying I think we want to move in the direction of commercial corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Other thoughts?
Yeah, another question for David.
Mr. Erickson, please.
You mentioned the makers, um.
Makers in employment district?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, how, what, how does that affect the use and or the expansion?
So as the use, so again, the use would be, um, in a general industrial, the use would be stated permitted in, um, commercial corridor. It would be conditional. So if they ever did want to do any kind of expansion, they'd have to get a conditional use permit to do that. The standard, lot standards are more relaxed than in general industrial. Again, my concern here is considering that the building does sit like right on the property line. Makers employment doesn't allow kind of zero setback. Again, so that's your other, your other, um, difficulty on that as well. But it would be, again, you'd, it would be less of a non-conformity in the lot size permitted through conditional use permit for makers employment. If I, personally, for myself, if I had to choose between makers employment and general industrial on this lot, I would choose, I think, makers employment fits better. The other issue is also looking at the uses allowed in makers employment. The current use would be a conditional use, um, a lot more light manufacturing. While general industrial allows some more heavy industrial, additional heavy industrial uses such as, you know, a ris- recycling, slaughter yards, things like that, that also might not be appropriate on a, on the, this commercial corridor. So there's also that element as well.
I guess I tend to lean towards that. It gives, uh, the most flexibility, um, regarding the use as well as the expansion. I do agree it's a commercial corridor. But there's also, I, I mean, the railroad's right there, that's, you know, about as intense, um, industrial use as well. So it's, it's kind of a catch twenty-two with that use versus the expansion. So I, I personally, I tend to err on the side of. So I, personally, I tend to err on the side of, in that situation, what provides the most flexibility? Makers and Employment is my guess.
Mr. Jaeger or Ms. Woodward, either of you have a perspective you'd care to?
Well, this one and the next one are going to be tough. I was, we're, we're in a terrible spot here. Be perfectly honest, because you have short-term vision versus long-term vision. You have current use versus future use. You have current, current buildings that either conform versus not conform. We have to make a tough decision here, I don't think. If there was an easy decision, I'd love, somebody just go ahead and spit it out, I'd love to have it. But my leaning here is what we have all been called to this planning commission to do, and that is to craft a long-term vision for the city of Brainerd and then try to make short-term visions to realize that vision. So I'm usually going to be on the side of making a decision in the short term that, that meets a long-term vision. We, so on this one, I'm leaning towards the, the commercial corridor. We've talked about this before in these areas. I think that, that does not mean that the current, the current resident or the current use can't stay, but what it does say is that we have a vision for a long-term and that we see, that we hope will play out. So anytime I'm caught in the middle, I'm going to kind of default to that, I think. Maybe not in a few minutes here, we're going to talk about that, because I got a lot to say about that one, but that's where I am on this one, commercial corridor. But I, again, I'm very lukewarm on several different versions, I could go either way, so. I've got a lot of non-answers tonight, you like this? Wonderful.
Would you like to hear my non-answer next?
I would love to hear your non-answer.
My non-answer next is that we've, we've generally said that we want to see this vision through Brainerd. We don't want to see industrial come in spot placed throughout. There's a, there's a place for it. Makers and Employment fits that, but then we're, we're piecemealing. So again, I have another non-answer.
I don't want to let everyone speak, but I just would like to follow up to that too. And I agree, I think the long-term vis, by adopting, by proposing, developing this plan, I think we're, we've created a long-term vision, and now we're coming back, we're, we're kind of tweaking those areas that are the problem pieces. So that's kind of where I, I'm looking to create some flexibility. I agree, I think by, you know, this wholesale, by the entire change that we're making, by the zoning ordinance update, I think is the long-term vision. We're making quite the shift, and now we're kind of going back and tweaking the difficult ones, so.
My, my thoughts as I look at, at the potential uses under the commercial corridor, as we tick on through those, what would be allowed would be auto and truck repair, major or minor, including body shops. That would be a conditional use. Rental equipment would be permitted use. Essential services goes without. Light manufacturing would be a commercial, conditional use. Radio and towers and so forth. Radio and television studios. Lakeland Public Television could move over there as a conditional use. Service, self-service laundromat, it's a permitted use. Small engine and boat repair, conditional use. Testing labs is a permitted use. So I, I think there's a, under the, under the commercial quarter, there's a lot of future uses that would be conforming for a site without necessarily saying that, and under the legal non-conformity, this business would be able to continue to operate in perpetuity. So to me, if we were to make that commercial quarter, it seems to me like it, it preserves the opportunity for this business to continue to operate as it always has enjoyed, but it also allows a lot of other future uses that would be very compatible and very, very likely, I think, in the future for the commercial quarter, fits without necessarily having to do a lot of gymnastics. I'm kind of, I'm kind of in favor of the commercial corridor, staff recommendation on this one. There's the rock in the hard place again, huh?
Why we get paid the big bucks? You have consensus here.
Yeah, I'll add then, I would, I would be the one outside the consensus until now, because I, I think that changes it for me, because if you're not seeing that there is an issue with the use with commercial corridor, then, then it creates the most flexibility for expansion and use.
And expansion, I think, is, is going to be a challenge on this site, you know, regardless, it seems like that's a tight box.
I just wanted to clarify that the current use is non-conforming in a commercial corridor. So auto repairs, just clarify, we're talking like an auto body, what you take your personal car to. What this use is, this is heavy truck repair.
Right.
That is not permitted, that is only permitted in general industrial districts and Makers and Employment districts. So just to clarify, there is a difference between the heavy truck repair and the auto repair.
But they could stay.
They can stay.
They could stay.
Yes.
And I think that's the new, the middle ground here, is that they could stay, just keep them.
And there's?
It's not like they got to pack up and can't do this anymore. Find, find something else.
And there are potential compatible uses for the property that would fit under CC that are not a stretch?
And looking at the placement and the size of the land, the, the current tenant is making this work, but the current tenant is not the property owner. Should they cease to do business, should they decide that they need a bigger space that will accommodate a larger business, and I think his property value would be better served being commercial.
So I'm going to look, I'm going to look for body language on CC. And I, and I think you've got your consensus, Director Chansky, of support for the commercial corridor for that parcel.
Then we're going to move down to the other related parcels. Give me just a second as I reorientate to our Brook Street parcels. Okay. These ones, okay, we're going to take another step toward complexity.
Just like Bill, he's feeling this building in the room. Can't wait.
Again, as a reminder, currently zoned I1. The recommendation, the current, current code is TCN2. And so just again, a little history for what Mr. Despot did testify, he, obviously, yes, he's correct. In the past, this has been attempted to be zoned as residential. He has appealed, the council has sided with him in the past and kept it as industrial. A little history again of maybe why previous planning commissions have attempted to make this industrial again, and I, is looking at, at the history, when you all worked through the future land use map, obviously, this, these parcels did not come up as a point of discussion. The reason, the reason why is really two things. First of all, is because when we looked at the prior future land use map from 2004 that we were working off of and the future, the 2004 map also identified this area as low, medium density residential. So it's been identified as this for quite some time. And so in 2000, it was 2010, last time we did a citywide rezoning, again, that's why at that time they also recommended residential is because that's what the future land use map stated it should be. I think the other thing to keep in mind here, again, with, with that, and I just, let me just a second of where I was going with that, with the future land use map designation as well, help me out, James, what we were talking about, again, is looking at where is this, where is this area want to be in the future? What is, what is around it? What is the harmony around it? Again, it's residential all around it. You know, talking with the city engineer, does again, get further, the further picture of this area. Brook Street is a seven-ton residential street. It is not nine, nine-ton residential street. I told me seven, but I could be wrong. But it is not, you know, a heavy industrial street. So those are the other, some of the things to consider here. So that was one of the reasons why it really didn't come up. Also, now I remember where I was also going with, with the future land use map, why this really didn't come up as a discussion is because again, when we were drafting the future land use map, we weren't going to the zoning code of going, okay, what is it zoned now? What do we want, you know, what, then what should we make it be? And that future land use map, that's your foundation. So we were saying, okay, what do we want the future to be? And then what should, therefore then what should the zoning be? So it goes in that order, not what's the zoning, then therefore what's the future? So I guess really the kind of, I think, the discussion comes down to with these properties is whether or not really do you believe the future land use map is correct? And if it should stay industrial, I think there does have a discussion, and then should the future land use map be corrected? Again, it's been signified as industrial for probably over two decades. We've had rezonings, it's always been gone back to industrial, so if we're going to keep, keeping it as industrial, then I think the planning commission should consider correcting the future land use map, because then I would say the future land use map must be incorrect. So with that, Mr. Chair, I guess we'll turn it over to you. We do have in, in the chart, you'll see the closest thing, I think, we think equivalent to what they have now would be a Makers and Employment versus a general industrial. Some of that, again, a lot of that is to a couple of things. One, to the size of those lots, these are smaller lots compared to a general industrial that has a larger lot. Also, things to also keep in, another thing to keep in mind, again, context here, is when it comes to industrial uses, there are more strict things such as screening and setbacks when adjacent to resident, other residential uses, or residential uses, I should say. So I think that's all I have on this to start.
Thank you, David. Before we engage discussion, could you, I'm trying to reconcile Mr. Despot's map against, against what I think are the, the proper boundaries or the defined boundaries of the existing I1 district there. I'm particularly interested in parcel 41360784, that's to the west, and 0978, and are those industrial or are those residential?
Say that again?
The two to the left, 0784 and 0978, that are on the north side of Buffalo Creek.
Those are, let me pull up the, I think they are, they are currently zoned industrial. They are, they are, they are vacant. And we did get, reach out by tho, that property owner as well. He did not state whether or not he was necessarily in favor or against those properties. He was just curious was, what kind of the decision was on those properties. And they are.
I apologize, I'm running on one ear, I got to remind you of that, so if you, if you.
So I'm zoned right up in here. Let me get to where we're at here. Oops. Doesn't zoom like I want it to. Oh, there we are. So properties, see these two properties up in the corner there. So 41360784 appears, and 413607978 actually do appear to be R2.
Thank you.
Not the I1.
So we've got staff recommendation for CN2 for all the parcels here. Questions or discussion? Mr. Jaeger.
Okay. Yeah. I've been losing sleep over these parcels here, to be perfectly honest with you. This, this is the quandary between long-term planning and short-term planning. 2010, a whole other group of people said this should be a neighborhood. When I drive through there and look at what is there, I think to myself, who in their right mind put these buildings in the middle of a neighborhood? This makes no sense. Or who in their right mind built houses around a neighborhood? This makes no sense. It just doesn't fit. It just looks wrong to me. If I was a neighbor there, I wouldn't want to see it. I, so I'm, I'm forced to think about a couple of different things. Again, the global consideration of what is my job as a, as a planning, as a planner? Is it to maintain what we've got and to keep the people that we have that certain use is happy, or is it to protect future uses? Is it to protect people who aren't here complaining because that use didn't come up tonight and another use might? It's, it's all of those kinds of things. There's a lot of things to consider with this. A couple of points that, that I think need to be made and understood is, is that municipalities, whether they be local, regional, or state, make laws all the time that render properties non-conforming. 2012, DNR passed the impervious law that rendered hundreds of thousands of lake properties non-conforming, couldn't be sold, couldn't be added on to, for the betterment of our lakes, the betterment of our cities, and so forth. So it happens all the time that tough decisions have to be made for the betterment, okay? So there's, there's certainly that angle. When I'm, what I've come back to on this property is pipe plumbing. Jeff, Craig, what you guys have there probably isn't a problem, isn't a problem. We don't have people complaining about pipe plumbing and go lake sandblasting, they haven't showed up to meetings, we don't have any of that going on. What's got me worried is that if we continue is not what's happening today, but what somebody could pull, come into City Hall and pull a permit for tomorrow that would have every single neighbor fill in this hall saying, what in the world were you guys thinking when you allowed this use to go on directly across the street from my house? That's what's got me concerned about this, and that's what's got me leaning towards a more long-term vision. Again, nobody is saying you have to pack up and move out of there. Where I'm at on this is we, we could make a correct short-term decision, or we could make a correct, me, sorry. I could make a correct short-term decision, should keep a lot of people really happy here, or I could make a correct long-term decision. I do not believe they are the same decision. So I am going to side on the angle of, I believe the vision is correct in that this long-term, 100 years from now, should be a residential neighborhood. Now, that may or may not happen, because pipe plumbing may stay there, and Jeff may, you know, the guys may stay there, and it may maintain what you have every right to do. Even somebody else could come in there, asked to have this reason, it could be looked at 100 times, but I'm going to side on keeping the direction of the residential planning here. But again, I am almost dead 50/50 on this, and the only reason I'm coming back to that is just because I believe the long-term vision. When we sat down, when this group sat down, Jennifer asked us to say, look at your future land use map, not what's there today, and envision what Brainerd could look like 100 years from now? And that's how we got started down this path. If there was something in the middle that said you guys could stay there forever and no one could ever come in and build a slaughterhouse there, sign me up, I'm great for that. But I, I don't see that in front of us, right? I see this really tough decision, short-term or long-term. So that's where I'm at, guys. I hope that didn't sound like a non-answer, but that's kind of where I'm at today, tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Other perspectives to?
I'll generally echo what, what Kevin says, but I won't, I won't, I don't think I can do it in such a philosophical approach there. I'll take the historical approach, that the reason it's there is because of the railroad tracks, and that's why the government built a milk factory there in 1940 or whatever they did. That made a lot of sense. I think at this point, it is, it's the vestige of the past. I don't think we want to run anybody out of town, but again, we have to look towards where we're going in the long-term. And we don't want, I, I wouldn't want to see industrial uses expanded in that area. That'd be my concern. That's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Gorm. Ms. Woodward, thank you.
I'm back onto the market drives what's there, and the railroad's no longer there, the other industrial businesses aren't necessarily there. We're very happy to have pikes in Brainerd. And if you chose to sell the business and somebody decided to move it, I think that's going to be a, a pretty clear indicator that it's not the right spot for that type of a business, and that something would move in there that would fit into a neighborhood. There are so many uses, so many buildings being repurposed into those neighborhoods, and they're getting great prices for them. I don't think we have to worry about what's going to go in there afterwards. I think we have to worry about what type of, what's going to replace that if the what type of, what's going to replace that if the use discontinues.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Well, I I have a hard time disagreeing with what's been said. Particularly something that Don said, you know, I wouldn't wanna see industrial expansion in there, it's surrounded by neighborhoods. Um, the railroad has moved on, it's now a trail. So I concur.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Yeah, question for staff on um you know, on the South Tenth Street there, next to Washington. We have the old window and door factory right alongside the trail, it has a lot of similar attributes to this particular um set of uh parcels. And and there's um.
Are you talking about?
Yep, right there, yep. So the city's got uh, the city's got infrastructure just to the east of that, but the um, and I don't have the parcel number here, but. Yeah, I don't know if that's still a a an operating business or not, but I I think that's a similar similar kind of a scenario um embedded within a neighborhood. You know, sort of these prior uses with historical relevance. That's zoned um currently residential, if I recall, and then also um we're proposing it to be in a residential use.
Correct, it's proposed to be TN one.
So um so I see some parallels right there um for setting um for kinds of historical uses, and I can't speak to, I've not been in there in a number of years, so I don't know what the current use is and whether that um window and door place is uh still operating there. So that gives me a little bit of comfort that something can exist and operate in the, in that sort of a residential context for a long period of time without being a disruption to the neighborhood. Um, when we start to think about rezoning to M and E, the makers in employment space, there's a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of uses, including a lot of industrial uses that are conditional that really are 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 not gonna be a good fit in the neighborhood. There are some that probably would never occur because the economics of of just for reasons of the questions of why is was this placed here? You're not gonna put an auto dealership in the middle of Brook Street, you know, it's just you're gonna have that sort of. So some of those things aren't on my worry list, but the the ones that are are difficult ones to try and work through. That either have noise or rotors or road impacts or lots of traffic, you know, one option would be warehousing and distribution centers, can you imagine putting that, you know, you want that ideally next to a a pretty primary connection, but that's a potential use in adding a lot of truck traffic and road impacts there, so I'm I'm struggling to figure out how to condition away the worry list that would be allowed in the conditional use while making the current uses conforming uh and able to continue on, the the electrical, plumbing, heating, air conditioning is a, is an allowable permitted use in an M and E, so pipe plumbing and heating would be there. Light and manufacturing would be a permitted use, so um Gulf Gulf Lake uh sandblasting and powder coating would be allowed, but it's all of the things, the tails that are associated with that zoning district that concern me the most is that would be not compatible with the neighborhood, and and I don't see a way to be able to effectively condition those away. You know, Ms. Chansky, I don't know if you have some potential thoughts on, you know, if it's a conditional use, could that conditional use um be disallowed um because of lack of harmony? Or because road infrastructure doesn't support it, and those sorts of things, so I'd like to maybe get a little feedback from you on that.
And I'll let, and I know Jennifer can chime in on some of this too, but really, again, going back to what a conditional use is, at its core, a conditional use is a permitted use. It's just a use that might have additional conditions placed on it within the ordinance, or it allows the planning commission slash city council to place reasonable conditions on it based off of the context. So I say a a, in this situation, if a new, if a use were to go in there that's conditional, you could take into account that maybe it's a neighborhood, even when I look at things like screening, those reasonable uses. However, if if the use as proposed meets what is in the ordinance, the city really doesn't have any grounds to deny that request. Also, again, I think the key word is reasonable, you can't necessarily deny by conditioning something, try to condition something out of existence, uh you generally get sued when that happens. So those are things to, again, keep in mind. You know, an example I would use is say, for example, this was kept general industrial. A someone wanted to put, turn this property into mini storage units, uh maybe convert the building or whatever it may be. The, I'll use an example, one of the conditions is that it has to have twenty-five percent green space. You know, looking at this property, maybe this one's not a great example, it looks pretty open. But say someone wanted to come in and they wanted it to be like ninety-five percent impervious surface. Well, they don't meet one of the basic criterias, and you could on that ground deny it, saying, well, you don't meet one of the main criterias, they have twenty-five percent. But if they meet all those criterias, um there really isn't a lot of grounds, I don't know, Jennifer, if you wanna go any further on that.
No, excuse me, I think David covered most of it. The reality with a conditional use permit is if you are going to deny it, you have to have a very strong set of findings as to why, uh which is why most city attorneys will tell you, don't deny it, uh and identify as many reasonable conditions as you can that are correlated to the protection of health, safety, welfare. So, lack of harmony with the neighborhood, then you need to find mitigative strategies to increase the harmony as opposed to denying the permit if it's identified as a conditional use permit, so.
So again, if you have, again, I think the concern that's been shared is if the property were to left, be left to say industrial, maybe some of those heavier uses comes in, they meet the criteria of the ordinance. Uh, this, the hands of the city are pretty bound to approve that permit. You know, again, there's some reasonable conditions that could be in place to lessen impact to the surrounding area, but other than that, you're pretty bound to to um approve it.
I think the the easy, the easy choice, the easy button here in my mind applies to the vacant parcels in that in that subgroup, I don't, I think that's pretty much those could very easily conform to the CN two. So then, the remaining parcels, uh I don't, given your comments and and giving the worry list of of other uses that would be allowed uh under a makers in employment that are not compatible with a neighborhood setting, I I I I have to support the the staff recommendation that those developed parcels should also remain CN two and be um legal non-conformities. That's kinda where I'm at.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, um I have a background in private security. It was something I I did quite a bit of. When you have lost the industrial neighbors, the, you mentioned the Seven Up used to be there, the railroad used to be there, the milk plant used to be there. Okay. When you don't have a footprint that supports that, you have, you have a business that has been put into a workforce housing neighborhood. There are many, many businesses that will not locate into a neighborhood simply because of what you've experienced, the vandalism, the property damage, the theft. All of those things happen when you're an isolated business in a workforce neighborhood. And rather than thinking of, you know, we're taking away property rights, I I feel like we're pre-zoning this for what it, what you sell the property to next when this use is done. So for fifty or a hundred years, we hope you guys are still there. The the job that you guys did, the co-op was fantastic for pikes. But I don't want to see somebody else go in there and experience hardships because it was put in, because it's in a place where it doesn't belong, it would be, it it would be an encouragement to to move the property into a direction that that fits the neighborhood uses and is less of a target for more of the vandalisms and things. If that makes any sense.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
The resale ability is gonna be a lot better if it's
Any other discussion? All right then, I think uh Director Chansky, I believe you have consensus on this particular um suite of parcels.
Jennifer has something she'd like to propose.
Thank you. Ms. Askam.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I have to start with a a huge disclaimer of, I don't know if this is legal.
Nice.
So.
The person who constantly talks about not getting us sued just said it might not be legal.
I know, I do a lot of.
asterisk, like, hundred point font.
So, you know, with that said, uh I I did ask Jennifer and David if they thought I should share it and said with the disclaimer, so what I'm, what I'm wondering is if there's a way, which we would have to share with the city attorney and figure out if there's a way to do this, but if there's a way to categorize these businesses in some way on the land use table, so for example, businesses of a certain type, you know, whatever we describe it as, that existed prior to the adoption of the ordinance are permitted in the CN two with a CUP. And so all of these businesses would actually end up with a conditional use permit in the CN two district that runs with the land, it's not given to an owner, the CUP would run with the land, it entitles them to the use that they have today, even though it would not be an allowed use on the table moving forward, but it entitles them and it it then runs with the land. So it's it's something that says, this particular business can be here into perpetuity, plus you can sell it to a different user. It would have a certain number of conditions that would be associated with it, uh but then it eliminates all of that, that concern that you're having about if it's makers in employment, for example, that it opens up all of those other industrial uses. So I'm trying to think of a way that says if you're there and you want to sell it, for example, you know, that this doesn't devalue your property because a CUP is a recognized, you know, permit, it runs with the land, it's not given to the user, uh it's an entitlement, you can sell it, et cetera, but it doesn't open up the rest of the table of uses. I don't know exactly how to do that, which is why I would need the attorney to help me out, but it it's it's meeting in the middle somewhere. So it's just an idea of how we might be able to, and there might be a way to say, if this happens, property owners, the the fee for a CUP is waived as you go through this process because we essentially want to secure this for you, you know, as part of the process. So it's just an idea of maybe a way of not creating a new zoning district, for example, or not giving them all makers in employment, because we don't want the whole list of table of uses, but it it secures their entitlement today and and would certainly be transferable to any new property owner if they sold it. It's just an idea for a thought.
So so the advantage of the approach that you're exploring um would would be similar to a legal non-conformity, except that Gulf Lakes, sandblasting, and powder coating could switch buildings with pipe plumbing and heating. Two different uses. In this instance, they'd be able to swap, whereas they would not be able to do that if they were non-conforming, legal non-conformities.
Not exactly, the the benefit that I see here, not exact, the benefit that I see, because you'd give an individual CUP for each of the properties that would run with the land, the benefit is twofold. One of them is that you, as soon as you're a non-conforming use, you are simply bound by, you can't do much on your property, right? It it like hamstrings you a bit in terms of improvements, if you want to expand, et cetera. If you ask for a variance from our code, essentially we have to say no because you're non-conforming. What giving the CUP would do is say, you're you're legally entitled, you're not non-conforming, you're legally entitled. If you need a variance, if you need, uh if you want expand, you can apply for all of those things still. Uh, it doesn't mean that you necessarily will get them, but you have the right to come forward and ask for a variance from a setback or to expand or to add another building or et cetera. As soon as it's non-conforming, it takes away some of those tools in the arsenal for the property owner. If it's, if it's permitted with the CUP, they're not legally non-conforming, they're they're conforming to their conditional use permit that was provided to them.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just again, I think the two clear, two things that Jennifer pointed out, I think are the key items. The one is, again, is, as a reminder, it's legal non-conforming, you know, any, you can't even apply for a variance to say like, I wanna, I wanna put an addition on, it doesn't meet the setbacks, I want a variance on setbacks. You can't do that because you're expanding the use, we can't give use variances. So we just couldn't even allow it because that that's falls under use variance, they said, it says we can't do that. You could do that in this situation, the other situation where it benefits them, again, because they're, they wouldn't be considered legal non-conforming, is a reminder of, say, Pike's Plumbing does depart, you know, they decide to go to a bigger facility or whatever, build their own facility, and it takes Mr. Despot a while to find a new tenant. If that building goes vacant for three hundred and sixty-five days, the use is gone forever. It is vacated, and it has to conform with the base zoning district. So the CUP, it could sit empty for a year, two years, and then and then another, you know, contracting company come in and take it, because again, the CUP runs with the land.
So um does does our PUD overlay that we did at Northern Pacific Center work that way? I mean, do we have the tool in the toolbox already that we could do some sort of a PUD overlay that says CN, CN two with with benefits?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I was thinking about that angle also. I would have to think through that a little bit more, there's a couple of things that that are a little bit from from my perspective, one of the things that comes to mind is typically the PUDs are less about use and more about flexibility from dimensional or physical standards. Also, it doesn't automatically negate non-conforming. A CUP gives an actual entitlement, a PUD is more about a district regulation. And so I actually think the property owners, in this particular case, because they already have a building and they have an operation that we could clearly define what that is, they actually get more out of a CUP from a, what you could sell, what's easy to understand, than the PUD overlay. But that might, that has some merit also, it, that was the other thing that was floating through my head of how you could go about this.
The other thing with the seat, with the conditional use permit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but if you went that route, again, having to confer with the city attorney if we can even do this, is it may even open up the door where these buildings could in theory be demolished and new buildings be erected. Where a non-conform right now, they're demolished unless they're built on the exact footprint that they have now, they can't be rebuilt. Because the uses are non-conforming.
Mr. Erickson, did you have a question?
If you understood that, Jennifer.
By demolished at the owners.
Yes, the owner chose to demolish them, not natural, you know, even even in, even if, you know, an act of God, they were destroyed, fire, tornado, whatever, they could be rebuilt, but again, in the current footprint. You couldn't necessarily do something else.
I.
Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Haskin.
Thank you, because I keep losing this thought, train of thought also in terms of the PUD overlay versus the conditional use permit. The PUD overlay, once again, is a zoning district, which means that it's subject to someone could rezone it, right?
Right.
As opposed to a CUP, the city cannot revoke the CUP. If you don't comply with it, the city can go through an action to try to vacate it or remove it, you know, if you're not complying with the conditions that exist within the CUP. But it's a, it's, it's not, it's not a tool that the city can simply take away. Zoning, as we're all talking about right here, can be changed, including a PUD. A PUD could be changed or modified or amended, et cetera. So the CUP you cannot. If they comply with the terms of the, so, I mean, it's, it's obviously a commitment to exactly what's there right now because you would describe it and place the conditions on it, and it would say what they can do with it, given their current operations, et cetera. It would remain complying, you know, in, in compliance with your ordinance, but, so that's also a difference between the PUD overlay versus a CUP. You can't revoke the CUP unless there is just cause, unless they are not complying with the conditions that exist.
Thank you, Ms. Haskin. Mr. Erickson.
Well, I appreciate you bringing up this, I guess, innovative solution to a sticky situation. And it's already been noted that big caveat needs to be reviewed legally. So I, I'm inclined to agree with that. For the PUD, I think there's some more discussion that needs to be had there, but are we able to separate this out, given that it needs more a legal review? Are we able to separate this out for further discussion and move on to the rest, or?
If I can.
Mr. Chansky.
My recommendation would be, if this is a route you'd like to go, would be recommend, essentially what I'm going to put in the chart, CN two plus CP, but have a backup zoning. So with that condition of, if the city attorney, again, just to keep this process moving, if the city attorney says no, then the proposal is X.
And I would support that as well, so that we, we can keep this project on track, so close to the finish line and some very, very difficult choices here. So yeah, so if that addresses the question. I, I wonder if there's consensus about the footprint of the existing buildings, businesses versus the vacant land? Do we have consensus?
There is not from my chair. I, I was going to mention that, that I think, what's got me a little flummoxed on this conversation is the two other pieces that are currently sitting, that's what you're asking about, is the two other pieces sitting vacant?
They're to the south and to the west.
Correct.
There are large parcels there which are, you know, with the exception of the two businesses share a lot of residential land use around them.
I believe it's the three highlighted, Mr. Chair, is it those three, I believe, that I've highlighted on the screen?
Yes, thank you, the, the parcels highlighted on the screen. So to the west of, of the highlighted parcels is, I think we decided is currently R two and proposed for CN two.
Yep, that's pretty much equivalent.
And across Buffalo Creek Residential there, whatever that proposed zoning is. And then, and then these, so, so my gut is to say that these are CN two. And, and we deal with the, 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 the knotty issue of the existing part, the parcels with the existing businesses in place, which would be gull lake, sandblasting, powder coating, Pike's Plumbing and Heating, and, and Mr. Maddox's business across the street from, from the Pike's Plumbing and Heating. That would be my, my proposal, and if we have consensus and we're doing a CN two plus, that that CN two plus would focus on the existing businesses on the ground.
We're good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chansky, do you have a question?
So my only question would be, do you want to take a recommendation of, you know, CN two plus CUP, but if not?
And if not, I, I think, I think we were at CN two, but, but trying to expand the box here to try and do justice to the folks that are currently operating businesses there. And I appreciate Ms. Woodward's comments about what may be the inevitable evolution here in this neighborhood and recognizing that, that we can, we can prolong the use there, but at the same time, there's, there's probably, probably a, a period at which those are, theirs are just going to naturally fall into a different use, whether they're converted to a daycare center, some residential thing like that, or they're raised and something else goes in.
Pre-zoned for the next, the next phase.
So with that, are there any other parcels that you wanted to call to our attention? If not, we'll ask members if they have parcels.
So there, there are, there are some, two other, three other parcels very quickly, I think they'll go quickly. I guess I've, there's three parcels very quickly that we did have someone reach out to us just today about. And then I'll address those first, Mr. Chair, I think those will go quickly. And then I just have a, we'll have a quick question regarding the rest of the parcels, whether you want to have full discussion on them, if you've had opportunity to review them. But the ones we got reached out to were for, regarding from Gustafson Properties. It is the three parcels I will outline here. These three parcels are all currently zoned B four. The proposal is to have them, again, these are right on James Street, Northwest Second, Northwest Second, Northwest Third, right behind Ace. They're kind of used by Ace right now, I think this is like one of their storage garages. They're all zoned B four right now. Proposal is TN two, they requested that they stay general commercial or stay commercial, which would then, the closest thing would be general commercial. I think staff's recommendation is that they stay TN two because there is still some commercial elements, like an office building could be put there, a clinic could be put there, it just wouldn't be opened up for more bigger, you know, auto shop couldn't go there. So recommendation there is just leave those TN two, but because those were called out, I just definitely want to make sure the commission considers those.
Thoughts or reflections on that?
I'll go to TN two.
CN two, right?
CN two.
TN two.
TN.
TN. Everything around there is already TN, so we're just, we're recommending that the proposed zoning stay.
So just be, CN, TN two is what we're recommending it as, that's the staff recommendation, keeping it as.
Yeah, which is what it's currently proposed as, we're just keeping the proposed.
I got you all screwed up, then I got myself screwed up.
And that's, that's consistent, I think, with the thought exercise we did for that whole James to Jackson over to the, to the mall. Just to explore that mixed commercial, residential and light, light commercial kinds of uses, and so it, it seems, seems compatible.
So with that, Mr. Chair, obviously there's still a number of parcels we haven't gotten addressed. That being said, none of the other rest of the parcels are really problem parcels. They're all parcels that really just generally clean up of, it was TN one, be better TN two. There are two parcels in there, I believe one is actually your son's parcel. Again, the line on the commercial corridor, I think it just went one parcel too far over, so it just needs to go from commercial corridor to TN one to stay as a house. Otherwise, they're mostly just cleanups, again, mentioned before, YMCA. Currently B four, proposed to be TN two, it's conforming under TN two, would better be PSP. I guess at this point, does the planning commission, you know, have you had time to review these, do you have any concerns with staff's recommendation on any of these and you would like to review them? Or are you comfortable making a recommendation to council to have these properties be zoned as we're recommending?
So are there any other parcels that commissioners would like to have conversation on, on this list? Or are we comfortable? Otherwise, I think the alternative is that we're comfortable with the remainder of the list that we've not discussed.
Nothing else, we were losing sleep over.
Yeah, Mr. Erickson, please.
One question, there was questions about the NP Center.
Correct.
Had those been addressed yet?
So we did, we did address that with the property owner, and I don't think he ever got back to us, I don't think Mike ever got to you. So we addressed those concerns with the, we explained kind of the thought process, we explained in detail of the uses he currently has, the uses we're proposing, any changes to those uses. For the most part, he's actually getting more uses than he has now. The only uses that he would be losing from the current ordinance to the proposed ordinance is like the man, like the industrial, more heavy industrial uses that are currently allowed on the I one. We still allow him to have manufacturing, light manufacturing, we still allow him, allow warehousing. The things he would not be allowed would be like hazardous chemical storage, you know, raw material sales, things, those more industrial. But he would still allow, light manufacturing could still be there, warehousing will be there, and the addition of things like residential, which he currently does not have, so residential uses would be added, so.
Sorry, could I follow up on that?
You may, Mr. Erickson.
What do you mean by would be added?
Under the current, under the new code, he would be allowed to have residential uses, under the current code he is not. So we'd actually be, for the most part, expanding what he could do there, especially knowing, you know, the conversations we've had with Mr. Higgins on what their vision is, kind of an urban resort kind of an idea. It actually, the current, the proposed code would actually give him much more flexibility to realize that vision than the current code would.
Thank you, and, and as far as infrastructure uses is, is a trail and allowable use on that NP Center? So that, that should not be a conflict.
I believe, I don't know how trail, generally trails would just be considered right away. So right away, he's allowed anywhere.
Because they are investing.
I did have one other comment on that as well. Part of that PUD overlay district, I know one of Higgins' concerns was he, he was going to have to come in for an amendment to his PUD every time he was going to have to add on or do another building. We did add it to that overlay district that he can essentially have as many buildings as he wants on that property.
Obviously, things like stormwater, if he ever wants, you know.
The caveats.
You know, those are just things that are, other things outside of the zoning ordinance that he'd have to comply with no matter what. So.
Ms. Yeager, please.
Thank you, I was at that same city council meeting, I believe Mr. Higgins also asked about the BIC property, and so I just wanted to follow up with that on the changes, potential changes to the BIC.
So the BIC property is currently zoned, I believe it's I two, general industrial, and it is proposed being zoned as general industrial.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
So there's no changes to the BIC.
The equivalency is there and there are no surprises in that, in that re.
Because again, just a reminder, really what we tried to do with those industrial is we really just took I one, I two and smashed them together. Some of those smaller industrial ones, we kind of moved to makers unemployment, but really the general industrial under the proposed code is just I one, I two smashed together, just to simplify.
All right, so I'm not hearing any other additions or discussion necessary that, that we're comfortable with the list as a whole right now. Mr. Chansky, I, I'm, I'm, I'm maybe looking for a guess as to when you might have city attorney feedback, I presume before, before the, when's the next meeting, May second of the council?
So we'll try to get, we'll get to that, to the city attorney ASAP, like tomorrow, and give him a deadline of when to give us, probably sometime next week, to give us a, a thumbs up or thumbs down, and then we'll be, we'll work with Jennifer to draft what that language is. The intention would be to bring this back to council on May second, really as just, okay, here's what the planning commission is recommending, before we come back with a new ordinance to adopt, is this amenable to you? Do you accept this? So we don't, you know, get back to an ordinance level again and then they have concerns. If you have concerns, express it before we go through the ordinance adoption stage again.
Madam Administrator.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the mayor was here this evening, and he left, but he did ask me to share his thoughts. Really wanted to know why the Main Street zone was restricted to that four core, instead of that being expanded? David, could you bring up the proposed zoning code map?
Absolutely.
And if you zoom out.
Yep, I'll, oops. Where's my, where's my little hand?
And hopefully if the mayor is watching, he shall correct me, but.
This is the donut, donut hole conversation again, right?
It is. He, he really wanted to know, I think, what the rationale, what the thought behind the restricting that four core block to Main Street? An expansion of Main Street rather than defining it as a small four block area, whether that is River to Rails or just an, an expansion? Can that be a larger area? And why was it the discussion just the four core? I hope I expressed.
David, if you could open the response and we can add our.
Yep, I will open the response and I'll let you all pile on, so I'll, I'll grease the skids, let's put it that way, so it's not my response, it's the planning commission's response. But I think summarizing the many, many discussions, probably hours of discussions we had around this, really was a couple of conversations of being, one, the, the, again, the character of, we'll call it the four core, the downtown, the Main Street compared to everything else around it. There is a specific character, and actually technically the Main Street in the proposed zoning code goes from Fifth to Eighth, so actually not Sixth to Eighth, Fifth to Eighth, so we're actually in the Main Street here. Front to the Maple, essentially is the, the alley between Maple and Laurel. Is that has a specific, that downtown character feel compared to everything else. And then the other second thing being trying to bring, especially those things south of Maple into compliance, because right now they're all zoned B four and they're all nonconforming, cannot expand because they have things right up to the front. And really, when you look especially at the, at the use table of uses and the, and the district the standards, really the main difference between Main Street and Town Center is residential. Main Street, you can have residential, just has to be on the second floor or higher, and Town Center, you can have it on the first floor. That's my grease the skids, Mr. Chair.
Madam Administrator.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think that is the concern, is having residential on the first floor, having it just restricted to what is now Main Street, no residential on the first floor, or having that expanded out to keep or maybe expand the downtown feel into a bigger area than just the four core plus? I think that is the mayor's concern.
So discussion from the commission, I think certainly the west boundary is pretty obvious. You know, it's developed with government largely, some commercial across the street here, but, so I think that's, the, the west boundary is, is pretty obvious, the north boundary is probably as well. So the question is expansion to accommodate, as I heard it from Alderman O'Dea and Mayor Bedeau, I think was sort of getting at the issue of, if we expand and grow our downtown, and where would that likely occur? It's probably likely to occur to the east. Would be my guess, and when you think about the character area and building something maybe somewhat in character to the buildings we have on, on Laurel and Front. So how do you accommodate that? Currently proposed to be zoned as, as Town Center, which would prohibit, but at the same time, we have a, an overlay on, on Laurel and Eighth. but at the same time, we have a, an overlay on, um, on Laurel and Eighth, or Laurel and Eighth, uh, Sixth and Eighth, um, that, that basically restricts, um, um, residential uses on the, uh, on the lower level. So one potential solution might be to just say, okay, maybe what we do is we extend that along Laurel to, to Ninth, the intersection with Ninth, as, as a way to accommodate future growth with, that doesn't occupy that lower level with residential. Mr. Erickson.
As I understand, correct if I'm wrong, Main Street, the concern I thought I heard from O'Day and the mayor was that they did not want residential on Main, on first floor in Main Street. Was I hearing that wrong, or...
So I think, again, there's some vernacular to clarify. I, you know, again, I think what Jennifer said is kind of more accurate of, in the Main Street, I think they're fine with, you know, they're clear, and there's no, in the Main Street, there is no first-floor residential allowed. It's more of the fact that first-floor residential allowed is allowed in the Town Center is more of that concern of, you know, do they want, do we truly want first-floor residential on, you know, say, you know, the block between Eighth and Ninth?
So we have the tool of the Town Center District Overlay, um, which could be applied to, to eliminate development there that would occur that occupies the first floor with residential. To the east, it sort of preserves that growth direction, since that's likely where it would go if you grow downtown. That's the thrifty way, and then, um, in the, uh, small mall to the south there, but you're not all the way over to, um, to the following block where we've got the, the clubs and things like that. I mean, that's one way to address it, or we're comfortable that Town Center is the appropriate designation for the block from Eighth to Ninth. I mean, it just opens an option here to, to, to address, um, an avenue where we can push or direct, not push, but direct future growth of, of Main Street, so that we get that downtown character area, um, growing in what would be, to me, a logical direction, uh, as opposed to moving it south or something to that effect.
So, Mr. Chair...
And James, you're drawing on there, or David's?
Yeah, so, some, just, just to help, and actually, hold on, let me, let me fix this, so it's actually, it stands out with a different color. We'll go with blue. So, right now, the overlay districts are here and here, and pretty much what it says is if you are in this overlay, you have to kind of match that of the, of the Main Street, so no, primarily no first-floor residential. I believe what you're recommending, Mr. Chair, would be maybe extend it like that, one block, or maybe two. So then, any uses along either side of Laurel here would also have to comply, but anything out, over here could do first-floor residential. Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Chair?
Almost. Um, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with two, um, um, simply because we could rezone or add that, an additional block if we, if we orderly development to the east, you know, take it a block at a time. And I'm not sure that two blocks is the right way to go there, we'll let the, let the market show us. Uh, we've had some development proposals already for that, that street, that, that kind of explored the, the commercial first floor and residential above. Um, you know, we, extending that too far might, you know, the, the market seems to be suggesting first-floor living, so I, I wouldn't want to close down everything too much. So I think one block might be appropriate, and we may, may say as a group that two is fine, but I think that addresses a, a, a way to be able to grow downtown character area. Other thoughts on addressing the concerns raised, or different, different ways to do it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gorham, please.
I'm very comfortable, the last two years where the work that we've done, the thought and the planning that we've put into it, and I'm comfortable to stand by it, our decisions as we've made. That's where I'm comfortable with. Certainly open to listening to their proposals, but I'm comfortable with the hard work we put in. I think it's been very thoughtful. So, that's where, that's, that's my position.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Woodward.
One of the reasons why I was on board with the map as it is, is because it forces infill. It forces us to condense our city center, and it forces us to put the, the heart of the development in one area, rather than allowing it to flow out and have, you know, too many parking lots and open spaces. It's not unreasonable to park and walk into that area and have everything in one area, but I, I would like to see, I would like to see us hit 110% capacity in there before we worry about what's going a lo, a block over.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Mr. Erickson, please.
Another comment, too. I recall a really fascinating analysis and presentation about the, when we were establishing the boundary of the Main Street about the window coverage, square foot of window coverage that helped us not only add to the, our sense of the feel of that area, but also kind of provide an anal, like a metric to kind of determine that. I found that really convincing, when we were talking about establishing the Main Street boundary and restricting that. If there's a, I don't recall what the surrounding window square footage of, of that downtown, uh, area, but if there is a way to look at that, if there's a justification for that additional stretch, I'd be open to it, but I agree. I, a lot of work's been put into this, a lot of thought's been put into it. I would stand by what we've come up with. I'd be open to changing if, that metric was used when we established it, so I think, if, if there's justification, I'd be open to it, but I don't know if we have that number on hand. I found that compelling, you know, because I know it's always a debate of how to expand that downtown or Main Street in this case, but, um, that analysis I found compelling in restricting it.
Other discussion, comments? Yep, Mr. Gorham, please.
Uh, when, uh, Mike Lamb was first working with us, I, he made the remark, maybe your downtown isn't as big as you think it is. And then at the moment, it was kind of like, what? But when you start to do the thoughtful analysis and look at, um, some of the things that Mr. Erickson said there, yeah, he, I think he was right. I think we're, I think we drew the line in the right place.
Thank you.
This also doesn't prevent storefront from being built, uh, towards the east.
Nope.
So there's nothing preventing that, I think.
Correct.
The mindset of Main for Living was to not let that come any farther, not, so you, you're trying to draw a boundary, if we want this to go this way, not this to come any further, but look at what we've got happening in our downtown, residential is continuing to try to move into our downtown. So, I mean, that, 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 to me, is kind of telling me kind of something, that we're making the right choice for sure, and protecting that four-block area, which visually looks different. I mean, there is no question, from one side of the street to the other, vastly different. This is a regurgitation of the exact same conversation. I feel like we had it right the first time. Is it maybe dead perfect? No, but it's not dead perfect on the hyperbole of what the future might look like for developer, not, it, I think it's perfect for today. I think we did the right thing for where we are today, where development appears to be going, so I'm gonna stick by with what we've got. The donut, donut hole conversation again.
Central.
Never did.
Yeah, right. Okay, so, um, Mr. Chansky, please.
Um, so before we stray any further, um, I'm gonna bring us back to the zoning parcels really quickly. I think, I think we have understanding here of what your recommendation is, um, but I would love a motion to it.
Yep.
I think it could be simply as, you know, per what you, obviously we have here, this is your recommendation.
So, so with the, with the amended, uh, changes to the list that we discussed tonight, you know, I think, I think we have arrived at the recommendation for, for city council, so I would entertain a motion, um, to adopt, recommend these changes to the, um, zoning map, and forward that on to, um, city council.
Sorry, I was so moved, Erickson.
Erickson, is there a second on that?
Second.
There you go. Okay, second to Gorham. Any more discussion? And that, that would, um, so where we're at, just process-wise, where we're at is that this would require a public hearing?
Yeah, so I can, I don't know if you want to, do you want to vote on the motion?
We'll talk about steps, then.
Yeah, you want to vote on the motion, and then I can discuss what next step's...
Yep, yep. Okay, so with that, then, uh, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. So you have, um, a basis of a recommendation back to city council? And then to the question of process here, um, it, it requires a, a public hearing, so I think we should ask city council.
So I can answer that, Mr. Chair. So yes, so because the previous proposed ordinance failed, we have to start that adoption process over. Jennifer and I did talk about it, um, about this idea of, you know, could we potentially expedite the process, get things going, ask the planning, the city council to hold the public hearing instead of the planning commission? However, one thing Jennifer and I discussed is the way that, A, the city ordinance is written, as well as section 462 of the state statute, is the city, the planning commission for, for this situ, situation really does need to hold that public hearing. The rea, the main reason being is if the council did it, um, it could actually open up to a challenge to the zoning code because the planning commission didn't do it, and our code says the planning commission will do it. So, um, I don't know, Jennifer, do you want to expound on that, or cover that pretty good? So that's the concern there, so that's why, my recommendation is that the planning commission does, we go through the process as laid out in the city, in the ordinance. So what that would look like, um, is, next step is, are, James, um, and Jennifer, uh, I should say, James and the Jennifers, will bring this back, will bring your recommendation tonight before council on May 2nd, saying, we heard you, we put together the list, here's the list, the planning commission reviewed it, this is the recommendation on the zoning districts. Assuming the council gets, says, that's, that works for us, um, we'll issue the notice of hearing, the planning commission will hold a new notice of hearing, or new public hearing on the proposed zoning code and zoning map on May 18th. You'll make, hold that public hearing, you'll make a new recommendation, a new ordinance to adopt will go before council on June 2nd, June 2nd, June 6th? June 6th. June 6th for its first reading, June 20th for second reading and adoption, assuming it's adopted on June 2nd, it would go into effect on July 4th, so.
Could, could I offer a different timeline? So our, our task at city council on the 2nd is to report a recommendation, um, of what, what we're thinking. What if we were to, um, uh, follow that reporting up with a special meeting on the 4th, uh, of the planning commission to hold a public hearing on this topic? And I'm throwing dates out without giving you the advance, um, which would then put this before the city council on the 16th, um, and shave a couple of weeks off our timeline. React to that.
The, I guess my one, I'm reacting as someone who will not be here, so it's not my problem.
James, how you feeling about that, buddy?
But here's my concern, my concern is this, to have a public hearing on May 4th, we'd have to have a notice of hearing in the paper Sunday, which means we have to have a notice of hearing to the paper tomorrow. And we haven't even had the council's blessing on it. So my concern would be, we noticed the hearing, we actually don't even have the code amended yet because we haven't, um, there's some changes, obviously, we need to amend the map, we haven't actually had the council bless it yet. In theory, we could do it, hope the council blesses it, and then meet on the 4th. Again, we're just really, really crunching that timeline. I don't know if Jennifer, review, have any comments on that, it's just, I think there's a lot of risk with that timeline.
Fine, we'll do it your way.
I would love to get this thing adopted, too, um, and, you know, um, just so everyone planning commission is aware, you know, my, my intent, even though I won't be a member of staff anymore, is also to see this thing out, so you will be seeing me on the 16th, or the 18th of May, um, and you'll probably see me at, can't do the June 20th, but I'm on the June 6th, but I'll probably even be at the June 20th council meeting, just to make sure this thing gets through.
Perfect. Mr. Erickson, please.
Um, can you clarify for me, I'm sorry, uh, May 2nd, what's being asked of council? Because I want to be, I'm concerned that that won't be clear enough, especially given that we're having the public hearing afterward, after that.
So what we're gonna, what James and Jennifer get the privilege of presenting on council is saying, okay, council, uh, these are the concerns you heard on, uh, April 4th, um, you asked the county, planning commission to review them, this is the recommend, action the planning commission is recommending. So with esp, especially the, the main four we discussed tonight, um, the, the Brook Street properties, Hybrider Hydraulics, these are the recommendations that they have made. There's all this, there's this other list over here of properties we've actually improved, because they also, I think it was interest in seeing that as well, but the main ones that you heard, you know, concerns about on April 4th, this is how the planning commission has addressed them. This is your opportunity now to agree with the planning commission or direct staff to do something else before the ordinance comes. So if the plant, if the city, what really we're doing is we're giving the city council opportunity to say, no, leave it industrial before the ordinance comes back before them.
So, not asking them to take action on it prior to the public hearing?
Pretty much, there, there might be, you know, the only reason, I think we probably will ask for a motion from council to say, yes, we accept this. And the reason being, again, is tell the, tell staff now if the, if, if you're gonna, don't wait till the new ordinance to say, no, we disagree, and then we do this again and again and again. Tell us now whether or not you agree with the planning commission, and if you don't, just tell us what you want. Because at this point, I think the planning commission's been thoroughly through it, and if the council disagrees again, sending it back to, I, I don't want to put words in all your mouths, but sending it back to the planning commission, I don't know if it's really gonna be any use, just council, say what you want.
My concern is that council's not gonna want to take any kind of action before they hear a public hearing. I'm just saying, I... So... I don't mean to put a wrench in the spokes, but I'm just, it's a real...
But at the same time, once you hold the public hearing, you have begun the process.
So, uh, you know, I, I, you know, I like Director Chansky's, um, um, intent there, at least to, to get an, an, an honest read on the, on the temperature of the council on these problem, the, these problem parcels that came up and our proposed solutions for these. It would be helpful to have that in the form of a motion, um, but if we could, in a different way, come up with a, a way of raising any other concerns before we go to public hearing. You know, I, I, I would like to get this going. I'm, I'm holding before me the comp plan implementation, and our first two implementation high priorities are updating the ordinance and completing the future land use. We're on the cusp of getting something checked off on our comp plan implementation list here, and we seem, you know, and we're there, I don't think we're stuck, but, you know, we're getting down to, to the really fine-grained issues, and can we live with the product that we've got? And for the key issues that were brought up, we've got very thoughtful deliberation on that for the record, so.
I agree, I want to see it get approved and for us to move forward, but I just think there might be some hesitancy, given, um, wanting to hear a public hearing, so.
If there, I, I do have one, maybe, one possible idea. Do we ask council to make a motion if they want to see any changes made? But then, not make a formal motion of approval, um, you know, as a potential, potential option, but still be able to voice any concerns as well? That could be...
So, I, I think I might want to clarify, if I can, Mr. Chair, the Commissioner Erickson's concern is by asking council to make a motion on the 2nd, we're not necessarily locking them in as in, therefore they can't do something later, but the, the issue is if they don't take any kind of action or indicate whether or not these recommendations are acceptable, you have to hold up, we have to amend the ordinance in some way, you know, before the public hearing, because we're gonna call for a public hearing, and then you have to, you know, this is the ordinance we're, we're having a public hearing on, um... If we're not doing that again, we, I guess my concern is we're just opening up the cons- the possibility of yet again, council now disagreeing with the planning commission's recommendations again, and now, again, we have a proposed ordinance before the couns- before the council that they're having issues with, let's get the issues addressed before we go into the ordinance adoption stage.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Can we stuff in a workshop between planning commission and city council to hash through what we talked about tonight before we send it up?
You want?
Excuse me, Mr., Mr. Yeager, specifically what would be the, the workshop discussion?
The workshop would be, this is the concerns you sent back to us, this is what we came up with.
So a narrative to go with.
A narrative to go along with what's coming. But then, then potentially we get feedback from that, we have another.
So two, two quick comments, Mr. Chair, on that, one, the first is just the time ta- timeline. To get one called per state statute, you have to have call it seventy-two hours beforehand. And next week is a packet week, so you'd have to try to call it before it's packet time, respond. The other issue again with the workshop, the council can't actually take any action. They can kind of give consensus whether or not they like it and give comment, but they actually can't take any, again, any action for the record of saying, yes, no, fix this, fix that. It's more of just consensus.
Mr. Erickson.
I'm comfortable with the timeline you laid out with going to council for feedback on the second. And you won't hear this from me, but what if the response is negative again? You know, that's my concern, and then we have the public hearing, and then I guess it comes as an ordinance later.
David?
I guess my response.
As a short timer.
As a short timer, is we ask the council to be here tonight. The council adjourned to this meeting. We asked the council to participate on, in February, they didn't attend, we asked the council to participate in December, they didn't participate. We've asked the council to participate. So if council's not willing to participate, I guess I don't know what else, how to pull them, what else we can, the planning commission can, staff can do to get response from them, is, I guess that's my con- you know, council meetings are the only time we actually have all of them there, we can guarantee that they will be there.
Well, I would, again, I would acknowledge the, the mayor's participation here while he was able to, to attend, although we did not hear directly from the mayor, but, you know, I, I, I share the, I share the uncertainty about this, and all we can do is quite frankly, just try and, try and get an honest, honest read from, from the city council on, you know, are there any, are there any other major issues that would prevent you from supporting a, a very good product that may still have work needed to be done later? Which we've already acknowledged, issues of, you know, lighting and other things that we've talked about. So there are, there's, there's going to be some reopeners here just to do additional business, can, are there things that just are, cannot live with, that you cannot support this ordinance? And if we can get that honest read ideally at the second, you know, however we do it, however we gather it, that we know we're on the right track, that we can then bring this product to, to public hearing, and then send it on that formal adoption process of readings again. I, I don't know how to get there other than to asking, asking for that good, good faith feedback from the members of the council on the product that we've developed over the past eighteen months.
Very good, like I said, I'm comfortable with that timeline, I just anticipate potential hesitancy.
Right.
You know, even taking a motion on it ahead of a, a public hearing, but again, I hope that that's the case.
Ms. Woodward?
We have an outstanding group of people who were able to be here, who wanted to be here, who worked on it and made a fantastic product. And if we send it back a second time and a third time and a fourth time, I'm still gonna stand behind it.
And I just, I'm not suggesting that, I don't want that to happen, certainly, so.
So I think it's incumbent upon staff, and it's incumbent upon the chair, and it's incumbent upon the liaison to, to, to try to gain that, that, that honest read of where we are on that, and I think that's, that's our, our shared task. To come, come away from May second with, so that we know we're on the right track, or we've we've got significant barriers that cannot be, be lived with until, until we have staffing back where it needs to be and such, so, okay.
Mr. Chair, one quick thing, only because my, my brain is not working. Do we have a vote on that motion?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, we had a motion to.
Yes, we did, yes.
Do we did have one? Okay, I for some reason could not recall. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure before we moved on.
This was the implementation conversation.
We did truly have a, a vote on that motion, thank you.
So with that, that's our implementation plan at this point is to, to, two things, number one, there's a homework assignment with the city attorney, and then there's the presentation of, of these recommendations at city council on the second. And we, we've got a motion passed that packages the, a, a preferred alternative and a fallback alternative, so. Thank you, thank you for helping us think about that, as Haskin, awesome. So at this time, it's time for public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda, the attention of the planning commission. And is there anyone online, James?
No one is online.
No one is online, no one's in the audience, I will call the public hearing nine twenty-nine and Cavlet at nine twenty-nine. So Community Development Directors' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so we already went through, next steps of the zoning codes, the only thing I had obviously is the elephant in the room, which is my departure. Tomorrow is my last working day, my technical last day is Friday, although I'm burning a floating holiday and family are heading down to the cities for a baby shower, not my wife's, my sister's, just to be clear. I already got a five month old home, we're not, that, we're gonna rush. But again, I just, I just want to reiterate again, it's the pleasure it's been to work with all of you, especially over the last eighteen months, we worked through the zoning code. I, I'm extremely proud of the product that's been proposed, and I'm looking forward to seeing it, following it and seeing it get adopted and then implemented. And then also just, although just very proud of all the work, again, working with the planning commission the last three and a half years on things like getting the comprehensive plan finished and adopted, getting the future land use map finished, adopted, all the other things we've looked at, you know, from lighting to landscaping, all the different things I think are all definitely, the city is definitely in the better for all the work, and I'm extremely proud of, proud of that work, and I've enjoyed working with all of you. Just a heads up on what's going to be happening over the next few months. So as of today, the community development director position was posted, so the position is posted. People can start applying for the position, I believe the posting closes May tenth. They're playing on interviewing candidates around May twenty-sixth, hoping to have a recommendation to council to hire on June sixth, and hopefully having someone in the community development director's seat by August first. So that's a little bit of the hiring timeline. The council has appointed James as the acting community development director during that period. So as of Saturday, he will be the acting community development director. So some of the things I wanted to point, just, just discuss a little bit, like the planning commission, no. Again, because he is gonna be, assuming that role, he is essentially gonna be doing two jobs, he's gonna be doing my current job and his, and his current job simultaneously. Another little caveat, if you didn't see it in the paper or just watched the planning commission, or the city council meeting, is that city engineer Paul Sandy has also issued his resignation. His last day with the city is my, May sixth. He's accepted a position with WSB, so he will still be around, but he's moving back to the private sector. So that position is also going to, is also being vacated. I believe Jennifer's goal is to have council approve a position profile, job description, et cetera, on May second, so then they can immediately start posting and recruiting for that position, so community development director positions, city engineer positions are essentially going to be a separation of two weeks, so hopefully you'll have a community development director and a city engineer by the beginning of September. They are not naming an acting city engineer or an interim city engineer. This is the public works department, that's pretty well staffed with their supervisors, between the streets, parks, transit, the supervisors can do that day to day work. We are looking at potentially getting a consulting firm, likely WSB, to at, serve as the city engineer, statutorily, we must have a city engineer. But that position would just purely be to be our city engineer and approve anything that a city engineer has to approve. Unfortunately, our assistant engineer is, does not have his P E, so he's not eligible to serve in that position, so that's why they're going that way. So with those two positions vacant as of May sixth, mine, a lot of things are kind of being shuffled. A lot of it, a lot of work is landing in James's lap, a lot of work is landing in Jennifer's lap. One of the things that Jennifer is working on right now that I think she plans to bring before council on May second or on another date, is kind of a list of all the projects that are going on with intention of kind of a green light, yellow light, red light, of here are the things that we're going, that need to keep going, here are the things that we can pause, here are the things that we're just not even gonna talk about right now, because we just don't have the bandwidth, it's not, you know, and it's further than there enough long, we'll talk about it once positions get filled. So a little bit of that with the planning commission, one of the things we are asking is especially as the community development director position is being recruited for, some of those further projects, I know there's discussion of starting looking at lighting, looking at parking standards, kind of, if we're willing, just kind of put those on hold for the next few months, why are those positions being filled? One, I think it'd be great for the new community development director when he or she is, arrives, it's a great introduction and get things going. Plus again, a lot of it again is just workload for James, and we're going into building season, so a lot of more permits and things that need to be reviewed, obviously just general department oversight, and then some other projects that we have going on. He gets, we have a tree grant that we need to finish, as well some other projects that he gets to take on, so we're just asking for now, just kind of put a hold, we're not stopping those projects, those are definitely things that we want to be looking at. But I think right now targeting realistically would be to have, start having those discussions in the fall. One of the other things, just to let you know as well, the council on Monday did approve a consulting services agreement with Swanson-Haskin to provide James some as needed consulting services. Really, this is kind of a backup to James, since he'll be doing all the planning and zoning on his own. So if anything comes in that he's not comfortable with, he just wants a second opinion on, something that's, especially once the new zoning code gets implemented, he's just got an implementation question, he's free to reach out to Jennifer and get her, her help on that as well, so James is not completely on his own. Jennifer will still be here to, to back him up when necessary. Beyond that, I, I think that's, I don't know, James, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
So, again, it's been a privilege, I'm still around. So you'll probably still be seeing my face now and then, I plan on being here on May eighteenth for the public hearing, and I plan on being here on June twentieth to see this thing adopted. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David, David, thank you for the service you've given, the guidance you've provided us, the expertise and the leadership. We started about the same time in our respective roles, you know, as the commissioner here and you as the, the director, then, then the planning chief planner or whatever, and I, I appreciate, you know, the insights and how you've helped me grow in this capacity and, and thinking about the role of zoning and planning and, and making our city better, and I thank you for all those contributions, well done. And congratulations on your new role. James, I believe it's congratulations for your, your overburden.
Thank you.
But thank you for, for stepping into that role and, and look forward to have that continued, continued guidance and such there, so well done. And, and Jennifer, I think it sounds like the roles that you're doing, you might be looking for rental housing, and I'm just the person to talk to. You'll be living up here quite a bit, I suspect, so. With that, commissioner comments and questions, Mr. Erickson, can we begin with you?
Just to reiterate, thank you, David. Very excited for, you know, your opportunity for you and the family, and thanks for your, your time, dedication, service.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Thank you. And good luck.
Mr. Gorman?
Somebody, as the old timer on the group has been here for six years, I just want to say, David, when you showed up, things really started heading in a good direction, I really appreciate your work, I appreciate the sense of humor you brought. I appreciate the fact that you call things the way you, you saw them, and kind of blunt, and that's who I am sometimes, I really appreciate that. So thank you and congratulations on your new job, I really appreciate the work you've done.
Mr. Yeager?
I've already gushed about you in like three city meetings, so it's, thanks for everything you've done, best of luck. But I did want to also add, as a comment, I don't know if any, everyone knows, but the Mississippi Landing Trailhead did receive its bids for the project, and we had kind of one high, but one also very, very low that looks really, really good, so it appears, as of right now, that, right? Appears as of now, Mississippi Landing Trailhead is a one hundred percent green light go for our project through, for the summer. So a lot of hard work by that team, David was a critical part of that as well. So, but other than that, that's all I have to add, this has been a long meeting, and you're gonna be your own assistant now, it's kind of cool, you're gonna be like, hi, I'm, I'm James, and this is my assistant, me, but anyways, that's all.
Very good, all right, well with that, and I agree it's been a long meeting, but a, a very productive one as well, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Gorman, is there a second? Second, Woodward, all right, any discussion, I bet not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, thank you very much.